It's time to call the order. The City Council and City Council's successor agency to the Community Redevelopment Agency meeting for the city of Grand Terrace, September 25th, 2018. Tonight, our invocation will be given by Pastor Julio Tabuenca of Campus Hill Church. And our pledge of allegiance will be led by Girl Scout Troop 76. They are also going to present colors and recite the Pledge of Allegiance, and they will receive Girl Scout patches from the council. So at this time, if we may have our invocation, please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the presentation of colors.
Father God, according to your word, those in authority are God's servants for people's good. Make the decisions to be made today, be guided by the Spirit, be a blessing to the community, and will bring honor and glory to your name. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Will the audience please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Put your right hand over your heart and pray. Hallelujah. Praise the Lord, the Lord is the God of all creation, and to the power of all creation. We are one nation, and we are one God, and we are one soul, with liberty and justice for all. I will try to serve God in my country, to help people at all times, and to live by the Girl Scout law. I will do my best to be honest and fair, friendly and helpful, considerate and caring, courageous and strong, and responsible for what I say and do, and to protect myself and others, respect authority, use resources wisely, make the world a better place, and be a sister to every Girl Scout.
Okay. Now, the council will be handing out some patches to you ladies, and we have some certificates. So council members, if you would, join me over here. If each of you would take a pile of those, and they are... They have the name of each of the Girl Scout on them, and I believe the certificates are in the order that I have listed here. So I'm going to call based on my list, and I'm going to move out of the side if we could... What's the best way to do this? We'll have the Girl Scouts... Mm-hmm. Okay. All right. And then we'll have them come and have a picture with us after. All right. Sounds good. So our first Girl Scout is Daisy Demiright. We have a certificate as well. So I'm going to shake your hand, and then if you'll go to Mayor Protam, she has a certificate for you. Thank you, Daisy, for demonstrating how we're going to do this. Brownie Victoria Villa Fuerte. Brownie Autumn Perez. And Brownie Mackenzie Clifford. And we have a brand-new Girl Scout troop in Grand Terrace, and this is Troop 1041. And so we have certificates for them as well. Brooklyn Stottlemyre. Oh, Brooklyn's not here. Brooklyn is in the swim meet. She's swimming. Now, we would like a photo op with Girl Scouts and the council if they would come forward. Thank you, Pastor, for your lovely invocation, and thank you, Girls, for... Girl Scout Troop, for your Pledge of Allegiance and presentation of color. Good night. Madam City Clerk, may we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Henderson.
Present.
Councilmember Hussey.
Present.
Councilmember Wilson.
I am here.
Mayor Protam Robles.
Present.
Mayor Macnebo.
Present.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Our first item is a consent calendar, and the consent calendar items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon at one time by the City Council without any discussion. Any council member, staff, member, or citizen may request removal of an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Are there any requests for removal of items on the consent calendar? Councilmember Henderson.
Item number seven, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Madam City Clerk, did we have any requests for removal of items on consent calendar? Okay. So we will remove item seven. Is there a motion for the balance?
Move the balance to the consent agenda.
Second.
All right. Motion by Mayor Protam Robles, second by Councilmember Wilson. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with councilmembers Henderson, Hussey, and Wilson voting yes, Mayor Protam Robles voting yes, and Mayor Macnebo voting yes.
Thank you. Okay. Item number seven, contract for laser light productions with Volt Live 2018 Veterans Day celebration at Veterans Freedom Park. Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My comments, if I read this correctly, involve Sections 5, 7, and a portion of Section 8. First off, I'd like to indicate that it doesn't appear... This is... Appears to be a contract that's been prepared by Volt Light as opposed to the City Attorney. I suppose that's okay, but if you look in under Section 5, Equipment Transportation, it says... The last provision says during the event period, the equipment shall be deemed to be in the care, custody, and control of the client, the client being the city. And then if you look at item number seven, under warranties, it says the second half, the Volt Live personnel shall perform the technical services in commercially reasonable and timely manner. And it talks a little bit about the technical services, which would seem to me to remove the fact under item five that the equipment would be deemed in the care, custody, and control of the client. And that gets to the point under item number eight, insurance, where it says clients shall furnish Volt Live with the insurance certificates which name Volt Live as an additional insured. Our standard boilerplate agreements require who we're contracting with to name the city as an additional insured. And so it appears to me that... That the city's insurance responsibilities would flow toward Volt Live as opposed to the opposite. So I'd like to maybe hear from the City Attorney on this, but the other thing, and it may be just an oversight, but typically when we get agreements from the City Attorney, they're signed by the City Attorney, so we know they've been reviewed and approved for form, if not content. In this case, that didn't happen. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, do you have comments on this contract?
Sure. Madam Mayor, members of the council, the provision in Section 5 is referring to the equipment, and it's indicating that the city... The city is the client, and will have responsibility when the equipment is here to take care of it. That is a little unusual, and I'm not sure if... Why it's done that way. However, will have responsibility to that equipment, doesn't get damaged or anything while it's here on our premises. As far as the insurance, I'll skip to that one. It does say that the last line under insurance indicates that the client, which is the city, will be named as an additional insured on the policy. And I guess the other one's about the warranties. Volt Live personnel shall perform the technical services in commercially reasonable and timely manner. That's a warranty that they're giving us, that they will do it in that manner.
Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Under insurance, it says client, meaning the city, shall furnish Volt Live with insurance certificates made... Which name Volt Live as an additional insured. As I said, that typically is opposite of what we normally do.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor. I didn't see he was reading from Section 8. Section 7 is where they have insurance, and they name us additional insureds. 8 is that we have insurance, and we name them as an additional insured, which is unusual, but it's the way this contract was written. And Councilmember Henderson is correct. This contract wasn't written by our office. It's their standard contract.
Councilmember Henderson, do you... Would you like to make a motion based on these comments that you're making?
The event... The Veterans Day event is wonderful. I support the event and the laser light show in connection with the event. I'm uncomfortable with the city bearing the responsibility for the condition and operation of the equipment while the equipment is located on city property, especially when... Item number seven under warranties indicates that Volt Live is going to be responsible for the care and feeding of the equipment. So if something happens under Volt Live's stewardship, it appears to me that it could be... Potentially be the city's responsibility. At minimum, it appears to me that the area of responsibility is muddied, and I think it needs to be clarified going forward.
Mr. City Manager.
Yes, Mayor. If the council will be comfortable, we can certainly bring this item back and clarify those issues and bring it back.
I like... I think that that's a good idea. All right. Do you need a motion as to that, or you'll just bring it back?
We'll just bring it back.
All right. Thank you. So we will move on to public comment, and this is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on items not appearing on the regular agenda. Because of restrictions contained in California law, the City Council may not discuss or act on any item not on the agenda, but may briefly respond to statements made or ask a question for clarification. Items may also have a brief response from staff, and an item may be requested to come back, agendaized at a future meeting. Do we have requests to speak at this time? Thank you.
A week and a half ago, I had my second annual watermelon... Free watermelon giveaway on private property next to Nick's Donut Shop with his blessing. I also, since I'm running for council, also had registering people to register, to vote. I also had my political campaign flyer taped to the table. Everything was going fine. A lot of people came by until sometime Saturday. The mayor and her husband showed up, and they were none too happy with my campaign flyer, and her husband made some statements with a frown on his face as he walked away. And lo and behold, the very next morning, I get a visit from the Assistant City Manager, who very nervously came up and told me that she was sent there to give me a citation. And I said, "Why?" And she pointed to my political flyer. I said, "Well, freedom of political speech in my country that I live in is a right given to me by the Constitution." So I told her, "Go back to City Hall, find the ordinance, and please come back and give me a ticket." She never returned. So I have an issue with feeling like I'm in Italy in 1930 during Mussolini's fascist regime shutting down political discourse. I am not happy with other people getting in the middle of it. It was a private property. It was property and staff getting in the middle of it. I'm also not too happy with the political... The new political sign ordinance. I've read it. I paid my $50 for putting signs. I need to pay $50 to express my political freedom of speech on Barton Road. I read several other things in it I was not too happy about. Very restrictive, especially it says where on commercial property you cannot have a total... Any commercial property owner cannot have a total of 12 square feet of signage. And if there's seven of us running, three races, if two of the people put up their six-foot... Square foot signs up, that's 12 square feet. That means anybody else that wants to come along and/or the property owner wants to put up is restricted by the city law. So the city law is restricting political freedom of speech. Members of the staff are going around trying to restrict private people's freedom of speech. Now, I'm not an attorney, but I think that sign ordinance, it looks a little illegal, but, you know, like I said, I'm not an attorney. So I sent a... I wrote up a little incident report, what happened, along with a copy of the sign ordinance, and I sent it to the ACLU and let them say so.
Thank you, Mr. McConnell. Our next speaker is Martin Gregoire.
My name is Martin Gregoire, and I work for a fantastic and amazing nonprofit organization, and we are operating here in Grand Terrace. We've been in the area for the last four years. What our organization do... Well, every year, we save lives. We save lives by preventing drowning among children. We teach young kids that are three, four, five years old and up how to swim, and we are extremely proud of that. We're doing it here at the Grand Terrace High School under the name of the Piranha Swim Team. We also promote a healthy lifestyle. We have 150-ish young teenagers that are competing under USC Swimming with our swim team, and they come at the pool every day, sometimes in the morning, 5:30 a.m., to train and compete. We have swimmers representing us at the junior national level. As if it was not enough, our organization, we also give chance a bright... Sorry. We also give children a brighter future because we give them a chance to go to college, great college, with full scholarship. Just this week, I had a young girl on my team, Jenna Sanchez, telling me, "Coach, I don't know which college I should go next year. I have the choice between USD and Paper Dime. They both want me." I said, "Well, you're a lucky girl. It's not a big problem you have." And those are just a couple of examples. The reason I'm here tonight is we have a simple problem. We cannot keep the pool heated well enough at Grand Terrace High School. They keep the water at 76, and the norm in the industry, if you go all around, is 80 degrees. And we've been to the school district. We've been to the school board last week. We have told them our members will pay for the extra cost of energy, and the... As of today, nothing is happening. And again, our members have said, "We will pay." We were told roughly $7,000 for the season. The reason I'm here, Madam Mayor, is we would greatly appreciate your help. You have bigger leverage, better leverage than we do. If you can just pick up the phone and give a call to one of the members of the school board, that would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gregoire. I will have staff get with you regarding this issue and see if there's something that they can do to help out.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We'll close public comment, and we'll bring it back to council for their communications. We'll begin with Councilmember Ken Henderson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My comments are brief. I was able to attend with Councilmember Hussey the Grand Terrace Titans Youth Football League kickoff. It was a wonderful experience. Youth sports is kind of a defining characteristic of this community. I can't say enough good things about them. We've attended soccer kickoff and Little League baseball grand opening ceremonies, and they're all just wonderful. See the kids, the parents, the participants. It's an experience that all of us should go through as many times as we can. Along with my colleagues, Mr. Duffy and the executive management staff, I attended the League of California Cities Annual Conference. I want to emphasize that there were 1,800 elected officials from California's 482 cities attending this conference. Wonderful experience. My only regret is that not all five members of the Grand Terrace City Council was present there. I hope that that changes in the future. It's a wonderful opportunity for relationship building. It's a wonderful opportunity for education and learning. The breakout sessions were excellent. And I have to tell you, when you're mingling with elected officials from so many different cities, you find quickly that no one... That we're not facing any problems that someone else hasn't faced before and faced successfully. And I'll just give you one example. I went to a breakout session where the presenter was the city auditor for the city of Chico. And in 2013, the city of Chico had a $48 million general fund and a $15 million general fund deficit. And today, the city of Chico is in excellent financial condition. It's an amazing turnaround. So I say that because we have our own fiscal challenges, but I think we have a way forward if we apply ourselves to the task. So at this point, Mayor, that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Henderson. Councilmember Bill Hussey.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight, and thank you for the people at home watching on TV. Couple things. The Girl Scouts left. I got to make sure that I give them my money for the cookies, and they don't come over because I just had to buy new suits, and I don't want to pay for new suits again, so... But it's a blessing to have the girls out here doing... They do all kinds of things, and it's really neat on their cookie drive. They donate a lot of their cookies to the men and women in the military and our first responders, so it's really a pleasure donating to them for them doing that for us. The League of Cities was a great event. I also attended, like Councilmember Henderson said, networking was great. Met some... A lot of good people, a lot of good ideas. Of course, a couple of classes. One was the homeless class in Zora in Sacramento, and, you know, we all know California has a problem with homelessness, and it seems like when a city has a solution that just creates more problems, more homeless come in. So I know we're starting that Hope program, so hopefully we can try to curtail some of the homeless and give them directions, but we can only give them directions and the resources. It's up to them to use them. And another thing was, we had this gentleman here before. It's for Renovate America. He's a League's... The League supports him. It's for the hero program. I would like to have him come by and talk to the council again on agenda, and if we want to do it... I guess we're the only city that doesn't have that option. If we approve it, then it's up to the residents that they want to use it or not. It's not up to us. We just have a thing for them, another resource that they want to use it for renovating their home for windows, roofing, solar. But I'd like the council to, you know, make a second, so at least hear this gentleman on agenda and hear what he has to say, and bring it back to us, and then... It's pretty much all I have. The League of Cities was a great event, like I said, and it'd be nice, too, yeah, to have everybody there because we can all network, just like when we went up to Lake Arrowhead and all the problems and stuff that the other cities are having. We're not alone. We're a small city. You know, our $3 million problem, big cities laugh at it, but, you know, that's a lot of money for us. And... And one other thing I liked when we went to that, our first meeting we had with Confire on Riverside, not Riverside, Loma Linda Colton, working together with the fire department. And I know, Mr. Duffy, you're looking into other avenues for a fire department, but it was really interesting in how the 911 especially operates, you know, on the cell phone, you know, and they, they can't pinpoint the location, but if you call for Domino's Pizza, they could pinpoint that. It's pretty weird how this technology works, so I guess if you do 911, call for pizza first, and then have them come over and find you, but hopefully the state of California, and, you know, they're upgrading their system there to make fast responders on that, so. But like I said, I'd like to have the Renovate America best and come in and talk to us, if that's all right with the council. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hussey. Councilmember Doug Wilson.
Just briefly, Mayor, thank you. Had the opportunity to travel the West Coast, starting Saturday, or Sunday, actually, of last week, and flew up to Vancouver, Washington, which is just barely over the border from Portland. And, boy, were my arms tired, of course, you know, that whole thing. But in the long run, I was really impressed with the environmental beauty of everything from basically Washington down until we got to California. And it does kind of tell us a story because even in Sacramento, things were at least a little bit green in some places. But by the time we get down to Southern California, it just emphasizes our need to be really mindful of our water use and how we treat our plants and vegetables, so to speak, because we could have a lot more beauty around us if we were a little bit more careful with what we do. And me being a dirty old developer back in my professional days, I take a little bit of blame for that because, you know, it wasn't unusual for us to go through and just take out all the trees. And if I was to do it over again, I don't think I'd do that because it was really amazing to be able to drive through and see miles and miles and miles of trees and green and beautiful foliage, so. So I guess from that standpoint, I really recognize that we're in the desert, but at the same time, there can, can be a little bit of enhancement, so I encourage all of us to try to enhance where practical.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilson. Mayor Protem Sylvia Robles.
Yes, Mayor. I need to report out, I did attend the League of Cities for one day only, and I attended the breakout session on pensions, and it was very, very comprehensive. And the latest litigation news on the California rule and different cities and contracts that are testing the limits of what we can do. We were told that there's two areas that we can touch, and that's the employee share of the unfunded liability, doing a negotiation, perhaps, on getting them to pick that up, and medical retiree health benefits. Also, the city of Fullerton was highlighted, and I would say the culture reminds me of Grand Terrace. They're very conservative. They hired a new city manager. They simply don't have revenues, and they're unwilling to go out and do a utility tax or anything else, so they're doing layoffs, including police and fire, and demotions in police and fire to meet their budget targets. And he invited everybody in the room to visit Fullerton because, he says, "You think the roads are bad in California? Greater California," he says, "come to Fullerton, you'll be in for a nice surprise." So it was, like my peers have said, it's really interesting to hear other jurisdictions, and everyone was struggling to balance their budgets and deal with the pension liabilities. And then, just quickly, the Grand Terrace Women's Club is just a club I belong to, but they had, this is their 110th year, and they had Louis Huerta of California Gold there with his book, and he really got a nice reception, sold a lot of books, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. My report is on SBCTA and Risk Management Conference. I attended the General Policy Committee on September 12th of SBCTA, and we had a number of recommendations to the board. One of them was to approve a lease agreement with Mustafa Khalid of Doing Businesses Stevie's Snack Shack. It's approximately 714 square feet adjacent to the main lobby. That way, passengers that are out at the Santa Fe Depot have a place to eat. We recommended authorization from the executive director to amend an agreement with Royal Coaches Towing to increase the contract amount through the contract termination of April 30th, 2022. This will allow them to have extra patrol in the construction area for the I-10 Express Lanes Contract Number One project. Also, the release of a request for proposal for the procurement of tow operator services for Freeway Service Patrol Beats 10 and 23. We received information on a draft forecast that's being prepared by the Southern California Association of Governments and SBCTA in conjunction with local jurisdictions for the 2020 Regional Transportation Plan Sustainable Community Strategy. We also recommended approve a contract with David Evans and Associates to develop a San Bernardino County Comprehensive Pedestrian Sidewalk Inventory. So they will go through the whole county and, and look at the inventory of their sidewalks, and each of the member jurisdictions will have an opportunity to, to use that information for their own. We also looked at the Fiscal Year 1819 Council of Governments' Work Plan, Budget and Authorization of Staff, to seek funds for, funding sources for projects that lack funding. In other words, they went over the directive that they've been given by the Council of Governments. However, there are many items, as you can imagine, that do not have a budget authorization, and so they will look for other sources of funding if the board so approves that. We also received a Transportation Development Act Triennial Performance Audit Report for Fiscal Years 1415 and 1617. And that was that for the General Policy Committee. On September 19th through the 21st, I attended our California Joint Powers Insurance Authority Risk Management Conference. Their keynote speaker the first day was, interestingly enough, an artist. And he, he had a really interesting message. And he had a message that, that works for governments as well as businesses, as well as just individuals. The title of his speech was "Embrace the Shake." So I thought we were going to be entertained by somebody talking about earthquakes in California. And it turns out, it had really more to do about reframing your perception on limitations to encourage creativity. And the idea that as, as a city, or a business, or an individual, the goals that you set, many times, you don't have the resources to fulfill those, or at least you don't think that you do, based on how you normally operate. And the way that he talked about reframing his, his view on limitations came down to the idea of the contrast between a limitation and a self-limiting belief. So it was very interesting, and, and I was really amazed at their choice in keynote speaker because he, he actually had some tools to help people get to an idea of whether it was a self-limiting belief or a true limitation on what they could do. Some of the breakout sessions I went to, one was a marijuana update, and they were, they were talking about all the aspects that cities need to consider, but one of the biggest things that they need to consider is that, that the state taxing on cannabis is so oppressive that when cities look at the option of having a marijuana business, and the reason that they, they think it's going to be good for their city has to do with taxation issues, many times what it does is it drives the businesses into underground markets. And so that's something to, to consider as projects come forward to cities and they determine whether that's right for their city or not. We also had some Cal OSHA updates, and they have a, they have a portion of Cal OSHA that will come out and actually give you a, a review and, and help you to work on areas where you need help. And the speaker said that a lot of, a lot of cities are reluctant to do that because compliance is one thing, but they're still not comfortable inviting OSHA to review things. But what they want to do is they want to make sure that workers are safe, and so that is something they do offer, much like the JPIA does, somebody that will come in and walk through with you and, and give you an idea of where maybe you need to focus on safety efforts. We, we, I went to a breakout session on protecting pedestrians through the use of safety barriers, and then a decision-making for elected officials, and retaining and motivating employees. On September 24th, I attended with City Manager Duffy, an initial meeting with the regional mayors, city managers, police and fire agencies, at the invitation of San Bernardino Mayor Kerry Davis. And this is an opportunity to discuss plans for the upcoming 2019 point-in-time homeless count. Mayor Davis was wanting to bring together representatives of the cities within this region to make sure that when we do our point-in-time count, that we actually are getting an accurate count so that we can then apply for funds to help those who truly are homeless and do need help. So coming up on September 27th is the Sixth Annual Business-to-Business Expo from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Admission is free to those that are interested, if they'd like to learn how to do business with the SBCTA. There will be other small businesses, specialty contractors, and large prime contractors there to talk with. And lastly, I want to, again, thank the Girl Scouts for coming out this evening, and what they did leave behind was a nice little rock that they painted, and this is a gift for the city, and so I imagine we have somewhere where we can prominently display this and show our appreciation for them coming out tonight. And that is all I have. So we will move on to our new business. With our first item, Agenda Item Number Eight is also a successor agency item. This is an update on the Successor Agency's 2011 Tax Allocation Bonds. Assistant City Manager Cynthia Fortune.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, and Board Members. Cynthia Fortune, Assistant City Manager. The staff report supports goal number one, ensuring our fiscal viability through the continuous monitoring of revenue receipts and expenditure disbursements against approved budget appropriations. So the staff report before the board tonight is to consider the possible refunding of our 2011 tax allocation bonds. So redevelopment dissolution was effective on February 1st, 2012, closing down our redevelopment agency. It required us to submit obligation payment schedules to receive property tax increment to pay for our obligations, and it suspended the use of our 2011 tax allocation bonds that were issued on June 28th, 2011. Now, Senate Bill 107 came into play, and that was in 2015, and it actually amended the Redevelopment Dissolution Act to remove some bond spending restrictions. And there were certain conditions that had to be met, and it was a certain formula. For the Grand Terrace Successor Agency, our formula allowed us to spend up to 20% of our 2011 bonds. Although the staff report has more detail, I just give a summary of the main activities. On the 2013th of May, we received a finding of completion, meaning we could now request 5%. So by May 17, we actually got 5% of that, which equated to $289,000. Now, to get the remaining 15, we had to submit our last and final ROPS. We did go through quite a few conversations with the Department of Finance, but then by last month, we actually received two things. Approval on our last and final ROPS and received the remaining 15% of roughly about $2.8 million. We've prepared a report to discuss the remaining $2.8 million, that was two weeks ago, and the city manager is going to bring it back at a later staff report. So at this time, we're going to discuss the remaining $16.9 million that is with the successor agency. This is less to 20%. So Health and Safety Code 34191.6 allows an agency to submit two amendments to its last and final ROPS. And one of those amendments can be to consider refunding the remaining $16.9 million. So the staff report, we actually sought the services of Fieldman and Rollup to give us an estimate of what the cost would be to refund and what the issues are, what the alternatives are. So based on the report, there are two. Alternative number one is to refund today. Bottom line is, if we refund today, our revised annual debt service will be $2.8 million. Our debt service today for the next 14 years is $26 million. If we refund today, it's going to be $2.8. So basically, if we're currently paying debt service of $2 million, actually roughly about $1.7 million, we'll be paying $150,000 annually. So the difference is savings. Over the remaining life of our ROPS, which is 14, 15 years, total savings is $23 million. So to equate that to how it affects the general fund, 29% is about 6.9% over that 14- or 15-year period. It's an additional RPTTF residual distribution to the general fund of $453,000. Now, based on the amount of time we estimate it takes to take this to the, to the successor agency board, the county oversight board, get approval, have them start the refunding, we're assuming that we would first see any of the residual will be in January of 2020. Now, if we were to wait until May to do the refunding, we would save 2 point, our cost would be $2.2 million, and the previous one, it was $2.8. So we would actually be having increased savings to the amount of about $600,000. And as you can see, bigger savings, bigger annual distribution. First distribution won't be in January of 2020, it will be in June. So what we wanted to show you were the main differences of refunding today versus refunding in May. The 2011 bonds, A, majority, they are tax exempt. If we refund today, the bonds will be sold taxable. So since they are taxable, it's a higher interest rate, therefore, it's going to cost us, again, $600,000 more than if we were to wait in May. If we were to wait in May, they will still be considered tax exempt, therefore, we have greater savings. However, refunding today on a taxable basis provides protection against a future IRS audit. Normally, when tax-exempt bonds are issued, they're supposed to have been spent within a three-year period. We are way beyond that three-year period, and at this time, our financial advisor doesn't know what the penalty would be, and we take that risk of waiting until May to do so. They may not come to us, they may not audit us, but that, that is something that we wanted the board to consider. Is it worth the $600,000 to wait until May and not knowing what that penalty the IRS would impose versus refunding today? So should the agency board approve the refunding? Again, we are using Fieldman and Rollup as our financial advisor, and our bond counsel will be Alshur and Winder. And that concludes my report. I will be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Thank you, Assistant City Manager. I have a clarification on the three years. If the bonds are sold right away?
No, if they were used in accordance to, with the bond document.
Right, if they are sold under Scenario One?
Yes.
That does protect from an audit?
Correct, because we, they become taxable, and we're going to pay the taxes on them.
Thank you. Thank you.
I also say, if you have any more detail, Representative Jim Fabian is from Fieldman and Rollup is here to answer any questions.
Thank you. What questions does council have of staff at this time? Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just want to make sure I understand the primary difference between Options One and Two. So if we refund today, we lose the tax-exempt status, correct? If we select Option Two, we maintain the tax-exempt status, but I'm assuming we earn interest on the tax-exempt bonds. Is that not correct?
Correct.
So that's the issue with the IRS. The arbitrage regulations could impact the city. And so I'd like to ask Mr., I'm sorry, sir, I forgot your name again.
Introduce yourself. Are you?
Yes, hi. Jim Fabian, Fieldman and Rollup, and Associate Cities Financial Advisor.
Thank you, sir. Are you familiar with any similar situations with other cities where they have undergone an IRS audit as a result of violation or potential violation of arbitrage regulations?
Yeah, I think it would be good to back up a bit. So remember, the original bonds were issued in 2011. When the original bonds were issued on a tax-exempt basis, the successor agency had three years from 2011 to spend the bonds. Because of the disagreement in the process with DOF, you couldn't spend the money. The IRS doesn't care. I mean, they look at this nationally and say, tax-exempt bonds proceeds have to be spent within three-year period. If you go further than that, you're subject to potential audit and a penalty. City of Marino Valley, and I mentioned to Cynthia this, they had a situation just like you, where they were in a, couldn't access the money. IRS did audit the City of Marino Valley, and they did have to pay a fine, a penalty with the IRS. In my experience working with other successor agencies, I've, in the situations where we have unspent bond proceeds, we do recommend a conservative approach to say, let's look at refunding the bonds on a taxable basis to provide some added protection in case you ever were audited. At that point in time, you can say to the IRS, we recognize that we had unspent bond proceeds past the three-year period. When we had our first opportunity to refund the bonds, we did them on a taxable basis. It provides you with a better defense if the IRS ever came. There's no certainty that they'll ever look into your specific situation, your specific bond issue. This is just a conservative approach that we would recommend you take.
Thank you, sir. I have a question for Miss Fortune. On the $600,000 savings, is that over, is that in one fell swoop or over a 15-year period?
No, sir, that is over a 15-year period. So that would be an estimate of about $40,000 a year. And again, since we get 29%, it would be 11,000 or 12,000.
Okay.
So if you actually look at the tables, yeah, the alternative one says the savings is, well, we will receive 453. If we do it in May, it's 466. So that's that difference that amounts to the 600,000.
Thank you. That's all I have right now, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Henderson. Other questions? Councilmember Hesse?
This is May 2018, is that right? Or is it 2009? I mean, is it paid off last May?
No, May 2019.
Oh, because I'm looking at 18, I'm a little confused here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That was an error in the presentation.
Okay. Well, we don't want to err when we get audited, do we? Now, if we did get audited, would the savings, if we did wait for 2000, May 2019? I know you said that you don't know how much the penalty would be, but would the penalty justify us saving the money? I mean, if we're saving 40,000?
Again, no certainty on what the penalty would be, but I would caution you to be conservative and think of this as, what is the best way to protect the city going forward? And we think the incremental difference between moving forward now on a taxable basis versus waiting until May of 19, it's not worth the risk to the successor agency. The incremental cost differential, I think, would be compared to what the potential penalty would be. We don't know what that will be, but I would caution you to be conservative and think about moving forward taxable now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hesse. Mayor Protem?
Yeah, I don't want to belabor, I like your advice, I want to go with that, but what I recall, the people buying these bonds have a tax-exempt status. So whoever bought those, the IRS could feel a little bit cheated.
Well, what will happen if you move forward and provide us with the authority to move forward? The current bonds will be refunded, those bondholders will be paid off, and then you'll have new bondholders who will buy taxable bonds.
Okay.
And they'll know that, make that investment decision, but there'll be no impact to the bondholders that bought the bonds in 2011. They'll be fully paid off when they're able to be paid off.
Thank you. Excellent advice. Thank you.
Councilmember Wilson?
The only question I have, in the numbers version, is, I mean, I understand what the ethical thing is, but the numbers version, you think it's going to be $600,000 worth the liability from the IRS? I mean, he may not know, but I would know, 600 grand?
There's no way knowing. Remember, the $600,000 is over a 14-, 15-year period, so.
I, that's what I wanted to hear.
Right. So as Cynthia mentioned, it's more 40,000 a year when you look at it that way, and then the differential between the two, when you factor in the 29%, it's not that great.
That's what I wanted to hear, the math. Thank you.
Councilmember Henderson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just one last comment. In a former life, I worked for a city that was considering something like this and a neighboring city at the same time. And with respect to the IRS audit, we didn't have one, and we did what the consultants recommended. The neighboring city took the opposite approach, and I mention that only because during the course of the audit, the city council discussions were televised, and the discussions were used against the city in terms of establishing intent by the Internal Revenue Service. So the fact that we're having this public discussion would not augur well if, in fact, we were audited. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Henderson. All right, I'm going to open this to public comment. Are there any requests to speak?
No.
All right, we'll bring it back to council for consideration of a motion. Mr. City Attorney?
I'll just direction.
Thank you. All right. What would you like to do with this one?
So in providing direction, we're going to ask that we go ahead and take the conservative approach, and the staff will come back with a resolution reflecting that choice.
But I think they want a motion for the direction.
That would be Option One, are you referring to?
Yes. So I'll make a motion to proceed with Option One.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Protem Robles, second by Councilmember Henderson. Please vote.
Excellent, absolutely excellent, on-target staff work.
Motion passes unanimously with Board Members Henderson, Hesse, and Wilson voting yes, Vice Chair Robles voting yes, Chair McNamara voting yes.
Assistant City Manager, you have more comment?
Yes, Chair, Vice Chair, and the Board. Just to remember, when we come back, what we're actually coming back for is an amendment to the last and final ROPS, which will be the refunding.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Fabian.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move to Item Nine, which is an update on the San Bernardino County Fire Protection District annexation of parcels within the City of Grand Terrace into Fire and Paramedic Zone Five. May we have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Mayor. For the record, G. Harold Duffy, City Manager. This is, as the mayor indicated, is an update on the FP5 Zone, annexation of the FP5 Zone. So tonight's presentation will be a quick history of the fire protection services, funding of fire protection services, cost of service, other agencies' approach to fire services, and a resolution opposing annexation into FP5 service zone. So brief history, the fire protection services provided by the, is provided by the county CSA 38, when the city incorporated. It was determined by LAVCO that the city could not financially support its own fire and police protection services, and so therefore, they remained in the CSA. And then shortly after that, the CSA contract was actually provided by the county Department of Forestry, and then later on, the county took over the services and provided the service with county employees. And the funding for the fire protection services is funded by property taxes. So the citizens need to understand is that the property taxes go directly to the county for fire protection services, to provide fire protection services. So basically, 10% of the 1% of the ad valorem tax goes directly to the county fire fund for fire protection services in Grand Terrace. So as you look at your property tax bill, and the average house in Grand Terrace is $387,000, so 1% of that would be 3,800 some odd dollars, and then 10% of that 1% would be about 387 dollars. And that's what goes directly to the fire, county fire, for fire protection services. This is sort of a chart that kind of shows the breakdown of the 1% ad valorem tax. You see that a portion goes to the Colton Unified School District, about 26%, 90% goes to City of Grand Terrace, education, the ERAF fund, and then there's county general funds, 12 cents, and then down below here is county fire at 10 cents. This provides the example of, I mentioned earlier, regarding the single-family household in Grand Terrace. So the total property value in Grand Terrace is estimated at $1 billion. That's the assessed tax roll. And of that, basically, 1%, 10% of that 1% would be about $1 million. So the county fire department receives about $1 million in revenue to fight fires and fire protection in the City of Grand Terrace. County Fire has estimated that the approximate cost to provide the fire protection services in Grand Terrace is $2.2 million. This is the number that they gave us when they were here on our special council meeting back in August, and then they did provide a spreadsheet, which I provided in the staff report to support that number. That means that fire protection services in Grand Terrace is subsidized by $1.2 million from the county's general fund. As the county board of supervisors also acts as the fire district board, when they have a shortfall, that money comes directly out of the county's general fund. So the district's solution to end this subsidy was to annex the city into the FP5 service zone and charge each parcel owner in the zone 157.26 cents. So interesting note about the FP5 service zone, it was originally established by the citizens in Hellendale, about 65 miles away from Grand Terrace, to have fire and paramedic services. And so now the county has used that same scenario in terms of annexing areas into the fire protection zone to provide similar services. So the district annexation notification process. So the county set a hearing on October 16, 2018, to actually hear, set a hearing to hear the annexation of parcels that they have identified to be included in FP5, Zone Fire Protection Services. The district protest process includes, I said the hearing set for October 16, 2018. The district adopted LAVCO protest process, which requires 25% protest by property owners with 25% of the value, will require FP5 annexation to go on the ballot. That means if 25% of the parcel owners in the entire service area, which they're going to be annexing, with 25% of the value, then it would go to a vote of the people. Okay, that's just parcel. So if, but if 50% of the property owners with 50% of the value protest, the item will be withdrawn. That means there would be no annexation of the process, in this process. So, but the Health and Safety Code, Section 13950, which is the basis in which the county fire district is being able to annex the city into FP5, has a different requirement. At the hearing, the district board shall hear and consider any protest to the formation of the zone. At the conclusion of the hearing, the district board may adopt a resolution ordering the formation of the zone. So in the Health and Safety Code 13950, the county doesn't, didn't necessarily have to adopt the LAVCO process. They could have established the hearing, sent the notices out, and waited for the protest to occur at the hearing to hear, to decide whether they wanted to accept the protest or not. So the district board shall, were also required to publish the notice of the hearing, and then the district board shall mail notices to all property owners within the proposed So basically, by adopting the LAVCO process, and one of the key components here in adopting the LAVCO process, what's happening is, the residents of Grand Terrace, along with the residents in various other parts of the county that are in the FP5 zone, all of those votes are counted together. So at the last meeting that we had on August the 7th, one of the council members asked the fire chief, how many protests would it take to stop this from happening? And it would have to be 50,000 protest letters sent in to stop the annexation from happening. So put it in context, Grand Terrace, if every parcel owner in Grand Terrace voted yes or no to the protest, that's 4,000 votes. So that would be 100%, but it still wouldn't count because it's combined with the entire So votes are not counted by jurisdiction, but co-mingled with other areas across the FP5 zone. So the options for fire protection, one of the things that the council said at the special meeting was, for staff to look at other options in terms of staff review neighboring city programs, examining potential partnerships, and discussing assets with existing partners. So what staff did was did a cursory review by contacting the multiple, our neighbors. Give you some examples of how our neighbors are providing fire services. So Colton and Loma Linda, they have sort of a joint executive staff, and what they do is they both maintain their separate fire departments, but they have this executive staff. And imagine this, if you're a small agency, and you're required to have EMS services, training services, and specialized services, if you have an executive staff that's a joint staff, then those staffs can also train on both areas. And so what's happening with their collaboration is that they've actually seen their ISO rating for their fire insurance go down because they've been able to add these enhanced services where they weren't getting all the training that they needed. By having this joint command, they're able to do that. Fontana, which originally had, was a part of the county fire district, years ago, the county fire district wanted to annex Fontana's district into the remaining areas of the county. County, Fontana said, no, we don't think so because our fire district is self-supporting. And so what the county did was the county, I'm sorry, Fontana established its own fire district, and then they contracted with county fire to provide the service. So all the revenues that is collected in Fontana remains in the City of Fontana and not subsidizing other areas. San Bernardino, recently, after their San Bernardino, recently, after their bankruptcy, decided to annex into FP5 fire zone, and they have, and one of the positives, the things they have is they have shared dispatch, and they were able to reduce their costs because, imagine this, if you are a city and you have a fire department that probably takes 30 to 40 percent of your budget, if you are able to remove that and then add a FP5 fire zone tax, your general fund's going to benefit a lot. And that's what the city of San Bernardino was able to do in that process. But some of the good things about that, San Bernardino has said, most recently, that they've reduced their overall response time for services. High Grove, we reached out to High Grove. Now, because High Grove is, Riverside County's fire protection services is provided by Cal Fire, and High Grove is in Riverside County, when I called High Grove, they referred me to Cal Fire in San Bernardino County because they provide services to Ucaipa and other cities. So there's still some discussion that can happen there. And then I was examining what Cala Mesa had done in terms of doing their own fire district. So those are the options. Then Victorville, most recently, is a city that's going to be going on its own and establishing its own fire services. And then the city of Rialto has had some conversations, and most recently, trying to create a sort of a fire agency with Colton, Loma Linda, and Rialto. And so one of the discussions there is, if that happens, you know, we might be a nice partner to consider having that conversation with. So the process to, the LAFCO process for the city, if they ever able were to go that far, is a lengthy process. You'd have to detach from current county fire, and what we do know at this point in time, that the $1 million that's currently going to Cal Fire doesn't cover the cost for Cal Fire to provide that particular service.
County Fire.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, what did I say?
Cal.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
County Fire.
County Fire, sorry about that. So the significant impacts, FP5 will increase costs for fire protection services to Grand Terrace residents by 22 to 55 percent. And based upon the $1.6 million that would be generated, that's with the $1 million that's currently generated in the property tax, and the $157.26, the new revenue coming in, that's $1.6 million, you'd still have a deficit of $2.2 million. That means that most likely, the 3 percent annual increase that should, that is possible in order to make it whole would occur every year under that scenario. Residents were not prepared for this significant increase, and the other options can still be examined to reduce costs. We know one of the things that's important, too, is understanding that the city of Grand Terrace has been a partner with county fire in terms of the city owns its own fire station. The city raised money initially to help with the fire paramedic services. So part of the discussion that I'm also having with county fire is the fire chief has said, in the past, the city received a request to, for county fire to acquire our fire station for $1. However, the conversation that we're having now with the fire chief is, he's more than willing to do an appraisal and then come back to the city with what the value of that appraisal is, if the city continues on with the service, and long-term service. So there's some recognition of partnerships that are available. So what the council has in this packet is a resolution that attached opposing the annexation into the FP5 fire zone district. And so with that, I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. What questions does council have of staff at this time? Councilmember Hesse.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy, for your report. Couple of questions and a couple of things. I know when I had a house in Running Springs with Cal Fire, I had to pay an extra $130 a year for that, all the residence that was put on your property. Well, that was a bill, actually, it wasn't on the property tax. So that'd be my concern, too, if we went back to Cal Fire, because especially with all the fires that happened up north. Another thing is, I know the city at one time, when we did have Cal Fire, we had paid city firefighter volunteers there. Yeah, and we don't have those any longer, no. So I don't know if that would be an option. I don't know if the county, that was with Cal Fire, I don't know if the county does something like that, because I know a lot of firefighters that get started as the volunteers and stuff to get their foot in the door. One of my concerns is, yeah, this doesn't go through, the county's still short on funds, and then will they come back to the city and say, hey, here's a bill for $1.2 million and we have to go into our general fund where we're having problems with paying for our sheriff? Is that one of the things that might happen? Because they're still going to be short on funds, and this protest goes through and it doesn't pass, somebody's going to be paying the bill.
Well, so to be clear, the city of Grand Terrace does not have fire protection services. That rests with the county of San Bernardino. And the property owners, this is how this works, the property owners are currently paying directly, you know, into the fire district. And so what they're proposing is that this annexation is a way for them to try and become more solvent in that exercise. So there isn't a threat that they can come back to the city. Now, there is always the option, which I don't think county fire would do, is that you look at the level of service in which the people are paying for, and that's a discussion that the county would have to have.
Well, if memory serves me right, I know Colton had a similar thing years ago, and they were cutting, and unfortunately, they cut some of the fire department, and, you know, as far as emergency response, it was a little longer for some individuals, and they didn't make it. That's my biggest concern, you know, is what's the value of life, you know? It's not a dollar figure, it's to take care of my -- I know some people saying, you know, like, well, it's, I'll just pay my own or go our own way, but, you know, it's a big thing, and, you know, it's something that you pay for, that you never want to use like life insurance, you know, you're not going to benefit from it, your family's going to benefit from it. So I'm just wondering, you know, if something's going to happen, you know, because 4,000 people here in Grand Terrace, we don't even get 4,000 people come out and vote sometimes, you know, it's very little. So people probably just say, well, forget it, we're not going to win anyway, that's some of their logic. 150,000, I don't even know if 150,000 protest letters will go through, he said. So I'm just concerned what will happen if it did go through, and how is it going to get paid, and if it comes back for us, and like I said, for Cal Fire, they actually sent me a bill once a year, so. There's just some things that run through my head on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hesse. Councilmember Henderson and then Wilson. Okay, Councilmember Wilson and then Henderson.
Couple of questions. Number one, and I think it should be important for the general public, some folks have gotten more than one notice on properties, and some of them obviously justifiably have more than one parcels. But in my particular case, the guy that did the engineering goofed up and had to adjust the lot line, the boundary, actually, of the tract. And I now have, I have had, since I've moved in, a 10-foot piece and a regular lot. And I'm not going to pay $257 deals, that's not a chance. So I'd like to, I'd like to see if that's come up in the past, but that's a minor issue. The second issue is, with our setup with the library, we realize some revenue because the library or the county system pays us money to use the building. What's the difference between that and the fire station that they realize benefits from to be able to make that? How about we sell them the fire station for a whole lot more than a dollar?
Well, that is one of the options that you would have, and so I think for the first time, the fire chief, as the county fire chief, first, he didn't, he didn't know until we mentioned it at our meeting, that we actually owned the asset. And so he had a conversation with me at the League of California Cities, and he said, how about, he says, it makes no sense, if we're going to still remain your fire protection, you'd be the only one that you have that you maintain the building. He says, why don't we do an honest appraisal, and then we'll sit down and have a conversation? And I said, I will certainly have that conversation with you and take it back to the council. And I reminded him, or I said to him that a couple of years ago, before I arrived, that the previous city manager had a conversation, and the goal was to acquire for $1 and take it off of the city's hands. And that didn't sit very well with the property owners.
In addition, might I suggest that we don't do one of these crazy, you know, real estate comp things, but do a real appraisal.
Absolutely.
I think it'd be worth the money. If that's where we go, I mean, just an option, that's one of the options, obviously. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilson, Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd ask for this item to be placed on the agenda because I'm encouraged by the discussion. I think the community as a whole benefits from it. Here are a couple of perspectives, and I have a question for the city manager and the city attorney. If the county was truly, if it was a good faith effort on the part of the county to determine what the voters of the city of Grand Terrace would approve or disapprove, it would limit whatever protest process it established to city of Grand Terrace residents and not 50,000 residents that would have to vote or to write a letter of protest. So that's four times the size of Grand Terrace, so as Mr. Duffy indicated, that's an impossible force. Secondly, the county board, operating as the fire district board, can establish any protest process it wants. It adopted the LAFCO process to make it, in my view, and maybe my view only, but to make it as difficult for the city as is humanly possible. We can't concoct 50,000 votes out of 12,500 citizens. So we were told by Chief Hartwick and others that this was a good, the county board wanted to get a flavor of the opinion of city of Grand Terrace residents by establishing this LAFCO protest process. And as Mr. Duffy indicated in his presentation, that's not required by the Health and Safety Code. We hear protests or complaints about programs, projects, and activities that we're considering from our citizens, and sometimes those protests change the action taken by the council on those people that are present. It would be great, I think, if, if, I believe, I should say, that Grand Terrace residents would pack county board supervisors' chambers to oppose this assessment if it counted. If they felt they could change, it was a 3-2 vote on the part of the board of supervisors, so only one vote needs to be changed to go back to Plan A. My second comment is, actually has to do with the litigation filed against the county fire district regarding the San Antonio Heights neighborhood in the unincorporated city of Upland. There's a suit that's pending. I don't know the nature of the suit, maybe the city attorney can offer his opinion. I don't know whether the causes of action that are set forth in the suit really have legal merit, but essentially, as I understand the case, the attorney in question has filed a lawsuit saying that the process adopted for San Antonio Heights and Upland violates Prop 218. And so that's pending, and maybe at some point, we'll have a final disposition, and we'll, that'll at least clear the path for us, whatever option we select. I think that at a minimum, the council needs to favorably consider the resolution as before us, opposing the imposition of the annual assessment, for the reasons that have been articulated by myself and others. And from a technical matter, and I don't want to get off into the weeds, the county has on its own determined that $157.26 annually is the cost of assessment of providing fire protection services throughout the FP5 zone. Normally, typically, if you do a benefit assessment zone, the assessment is based upon the benefits derived by those paying the assessment. And I wager to say that, looking at the calls for service in the city of Grand Terrace, where there are far more calls for service from, for those having medical issues than the actual building structure, fire protection aspect of it, if it was studied legitimately and independently, I would believe that the costs for providing services in Grand Terrace would not be as high as it is in other areas. Nevertheless, I understand it's easy and more convenient for the county to assess that $157.26 on a zone-wide basis. So to conclude, I think we should favorably consider the resolution, and so that we can at least evaluate the options that the city manager has described in summary fashion. We can't get to, we may determine down the road that we remain in the district, but we can't make an informed decision about that process, in my view, until all of these options are studied in a manner that will allow the county, excuse me, the council to make informed decisions. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Did you have a question, Councilmember Henderson?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. I wanted to know about the status of the San Antonio Heights lawsuit, and whether or not, what the status is, and whether or not an anticipated disposition is near term, midterm, or long term.
Let me know when we can deliberate, when I can do my job here.
Mr. City Manager, did you have an answer to his question?
I do not, I thought that he was...
Mr. City Attorney, do you have an answer to that question?
No, I do not. I don't know the status of the case at this point. We can look into it.
Would you please? Thank you. Mayor Protem, do you have questions at this time?
No, I want to deliberate, I want to do my job as a representative of the people. Can we deliberate? Can we talk about this?
We can, but I'm going to open it up to public comment before we come back for deliberation. And if there are no more questions, I will open it up...
And Mayor, I have one more question.
Okay, Councilmember Hesse.
I think it was what Mr. Wilson said, and I think Mr. Allen brought this up, too. I remember him talking about it. As far as the parcel taxes, you know, the per parcel, is the apartment's going to pay the same as one parcel as the cities, or are they looking into how we were going to do our parcel tax? Do you know if they decide to break that up, or, you know, the Highlands is going to pay, you know, $157, the same as a household?
Well, if it's on one parcel, that would be the case. If it's multiple parcels, they would pay that per parcel.
Okay, I was just wondering, trying to make this fair for everybody if we get it, if this happens. So that was just a question that was brought up by the public, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hesse. All right, so we will open up to public comment. We have requests to speak. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, my apologies, too. I thought you would ask for comments and not questions, and so I would have, should have waited until you asked for comments, and so I got a, went out of turn there, and I apologize.
Thank you, Councilmember Henderson. Our first speaker is Jeremy Rivera.
Mr. Duffy, you said that the average home price in Grand Terrace was $387,000, 4,000 That doesn't calculate out to be $100 billion in, or a billion dollars on the tax rolls. So I think sometimes when we look at those numbers, it would actually be $1.548 billion if we were being assessed at $387,000 per parcel for 4,000 parcels. So that 1 percent. But needless to say, why don't we lease the fire department? This would be an idea back to the county for $157 times 4,000, which would be $628,000 per year, with a 3 percent increase every year, because that would be roughly about $50,000 a month, and I think that is... and I think that is appropriate value for a fire department that we own. So in that way, no one would have to pay anything to Chief Hartwick and all his Ford Expeditions and Chevy Suburbans that they drive around and guzzle gas all over the county. I went to four of these community meetings. I wanted to see if we got the same dog and pony show that everybody else got. And yeah, and when you start asking Chief Hartwick how they came up with this $157, he doesn't know. And that alarms me, is him being the chief administrator in charge of county fire. Mr. Henderson, I rarely agree with you, but on this one, I'm going to agree with you on the benefit that Mr. Houssey just pointed out, because I pointed that out last time. The Highlands sits on three parcels. $157 times three is less than 500 bucks. How many units are over in the Highlands? I pay $6,000 a year in property tax on the corner of Ambir and Reed, and that just is not fair. Also, 80% of our calls are medical. One thing that we could also look at is maybe just contracting with an EMS ambulance company to handle those calls, but I really, so they would handle all the medical calls. We would just have an ambulance stationed, and they could handle those calls in Grand Terrace. But I really, really like the idea of getting together with Loma Linda and Colton. I think that's our biggest bang for the best buck if the fire department or county fire does not want to lease our building for $628,000 per year. But we'll have to ask Chief Hartwick, I guess, at the September 16 meeting. That's 10:00 a.m., because, you know, most people are at work, so who's going to go pack that meeting at 10:00 a.m. in the morning? Maybe I'll bring my four-year-old and then make her scream and do dances or something. We'll have a good time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rivera. Jeff Allen?
Thanks, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My two, Councilmember Henderson, I agree with what you've said about how members of our city could go and pack the council chambers. In fact, I did that. I went down there and I spoke to the board of supervisors about this unfair tax publicly. Some of the things, the research that I've done about this, and what I remember in the more than 20 years I spent around the world on military bases, all our fire departments were contracted through defense contracting agencies like DynaCorp, Johnson Controls, and they were great fire departments, and you never knew the difference between them and the county, you know, or the other outside agency. And so these are options also. One of the options would be Centerra that San Bernardino City had discussed contracting with to provide services before county took over. And I think Centerra had showed them how they could save them an enormous amount of money, but of course, there's always the unions that leaders have to deal with. So look at private companies, because they're out there and they provide, NASA uses Centerra to provide fire protection services for their space launches. So I think, you know, if they can cover something like that, they could cover us. But I don't know, I haven't talked to them about what they would charge. Who knows, you know? But one thing that this contract that the county wants to put on us is, they're saying 2.2 million, and they want this $157 with this annual 3% pay raise or this annual 3% increase. And that 3% can add up to quite a large sum of money when you combine all of the properties that are paying it here in Grand Terrace. You know, it totals up to close to $80,000 annually in increases, you know? So our residents will feel this continually. It'll just be every year, you know, something. And, you know, after a while, our residents just won't be able to buy those monthly cups of Starbucks. You guys kept trying to tell them it was only going to cost them.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. All right, we'll close public comment and bring it back to council for deliberation. Madam Mayor, Pro Tem.
I think it would be helpful we had Item 1, approve the resolution, blah, blah, blah. And then 2, I mean, you had to kind of like look in here, direct staff to continue investigation of service items. I would like us to go ahead and act on approving the resolution opposing. And the reason is, this is designed for them to win and protest votes to fail. You're just never going to see an instance where people have packed places at 10 o'clock. So I think we can do that. And then, so I have the mic. What I'd like to direct staff to do is to go ahead and look at all the options. Calamasa, starting our own, I would, my preference, putting that a little bit lower on the priority because we have a difficult time managing what we have already. We have some things facing us that I think would be a bit. I think Fontana Service District and all those options come to play when, as we go and we find what option we need, because we'll basically have to detach from the new fire district. So, so my, to condense my thing is, again, to look at the options. Colton, Loma Linda Shared Command Staff, the Riverside County, potential of using CalFire, and looking at the Calamasa option. And the end result of our actions would, I don't think we need to action now because we're not faced with detaching yet. We'll deal with that when we come. My points on this is, we don't need the amount of service they're giving. We have basically medical calls. We've had two fires, so I think we can, if we shared some kind of service, and I think we can afford that with possibly the money we have. I haven't gotten one email on this from anybody. I haven't gotten one phone call. As opposed to Riverside Highland, it was intense. So it just is interesting, the difference between, and there was a letter to each household. Oh, and finally, one of our interim city managers, and I never get her name right, Cheryl Jacobs, what's her name?
Carol.
Carol Jacobs, had discussed with us about giving up the fire station for a dollar, and I was adamantly opposed because, a dollar? And then also, we paid $37,000 to roof a facility, you know, that was ours. That was kind of, so it was like, well, why didn't you just give it to them? Well, no. So this is a long, long festering issue that needs a deep dive, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Pro Tem. Other comments? Councilmember Henderson?
With respect to the possibility of the city detaching from the district, it's important to note that we'd have to go through the LAFCO process to do that. And Mr. Duffy's indicated that the time concerns with respect to that. But my point is, the LAFCO Plan for Service process requires that the Plan for Service that we would develop as part of the detachment process should be equal to or greater than the service we currently receive from the county fire district. So I agree with the Madam Mayor, Pro Tem, that maybe there's a way, I mean, not there's a way, that the costs, the actual costs, might be not, might be different than what is being commonly discussed. But if we detach, it's, we have to develop a Plan for Service that is equal or greater than, in terms of levels of service, than the service currently provided by the county fire district. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. I think that we should consider the improvement of the resolution. When we are looking at alternatives, I really think that we need to have the discussion about the alternative in pricing for the county fire contract that we already have. I understand we have a lot of other options, and I certainly need to see the numbers and how they would, how they would provide service that would be equal or greater and at what cost, but also I think that there's still options to talk with the county in ways to afford the service that we are currently provided. And maybe it is to look at some of the jurisdictions where it is heavily medical-related. I know that there are some other jurisdictions that have highly medical. I don't know if that reduces the cost or changes the staffing, but perhaps that is something that could be looked at as well. Those would be my preferences. Any other comments?
I just...
Madam Pro Tem?
I'm happy to include that, but what I'm concerned about, because my experience with this is, I was reading some archive information when the city was faced with the consolidated fire issue, and there were some LAFCO timelines that they could not reach. And then there was another wave of discussion on fire, and this city just gave up everything. They just, I mean, it was like the dog, that somebody comes and breaks in and showed them all where all the good stuff was. So I'm just saying, I think a couple of things. We may need a consultant on this to really do a good job. I just can't see staff being able to do this on their own. I think we need to put some dollars behind this to save the integrity of it. LAFCO is actually a state agency, so, you know, the equal or whatever, we may have to talk, engage our legislatures, Eloise Reyes, and on, there might have to be some legislation done to get us where we need to go. But I'm happy to include also the county fire discussion.
Any other comments? Is there consideration of a motion at this time?
I'll move to approve the resolution opposing San Bernardino County Fire Protection District annexation of parcels within the City of Grand Terrace into FP5 zone and review staff's initial findings on alternative fire protection options and direct staff to continue the investigation of service options.
Second.
One question before we vote. We have a motion by Madam Pro Tem, a second by Councilmember Henderson. Mr. City Attorney, and I apologize for not asking this before, and it doesn't have a lot of bearing on this. Is the city in a position to protest on behalf of all of the parcel owners?
That was something that, Madam Mayor, members of council, that we discussed in our office. We haven't conducted any research in it because we haven't been asked, but we think that's an issue since the city will probably be exempt from the parcel tax, and therefore it may not have standing, whereas any one of you who live here would have standing. And that may be another impediment to challenging. And Councilmember Henderson is correct that the way to challenge this would be through Prop 218 issue. That's another thing we identified.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. We have a motion in a second. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Henderson, Houssey, and Wilson voting yes. Madam Pro Tem Robles voting yes, and Madam Matnobo voting yes.
I just wanted to make a comment on Prop 218.
Madam Pro Tem.
And because, as Mr. Rivera mentioned and others mentioned, they couldn't say how they were assessing you and what the benefit is, and Prop 218 says you must have a nexus between the fee that you're charging and the benefits to the property owner. So that looks very promising on that front.
Thank you, Madam Pro Tem. Vote to Item 10, review list of eligible projects that are consistent with the city's redevelopment plan and bond indenture. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. And actually, for this particular item, and because it is a rather large item, that we have a number of staff members who will be presenting on this particular item. And what I'd like to say before we get started is, this is really just a list of projects that we believe are eligible for the use of bond proceeds, which results, it's basically, it's one-time money. And so the action of the council would take today is simply giving staff direction. If you see a project on here that you like and the count, that staff is presenting, and we get some positive feedback, we'll come back with a project that's fully vetted and bring it back to you. There will be, there's, all the items on here, you're not committing to any contracts at all. You're not asking to spend any money. There are a few items on here that are less than $10,000, and as the staff report says, that if there's something that the council would like to do, the city manager can execute those as quickly as possible. But what this really is supposed to be is a brainstorming session based on what we've heard the council indicate over the last year or so. We've come back, we've applied those thoughts to the different areas that we believe the bond proceeds could be eligible for use. So I think I might have knocked off four or five of my slides by that conversation. So it's a brief history, a resource commitment, and brainstorming. So in September 2018, SB 107 became law. It allows successor agencies that complete their last and final recognition obligation payment, ROPS, to utilize up to 20% of their bond proceeds. Mrs. Fortune went over that earlier in the evening. The city submitted its last and final ROPS and expenditure agreement with the successor agency and received the authorization to use $1.9 million in bond proceeds. Ms. Fortune did mention that the city did receive $2.8 million. And what we had said to the council at the previous meetings that we recommended the council only focus in on $1.9 million of expenditures until we can pass some audits and some make sure that we are allowed to keep the remaining portion of the money. So the commitment tonight, there's no contract will be awarded tonight. We are brainstorming as staff and seek direction and feedback of this project list. So project list categories would be public works, parks, economic development, planning and land use, and multiple staff will be presenting tonight, the ideas tonight. Tonight's discussion will provide staff direction. Approval of ideas tonight will result in staff further developing projects. As I said earlier, this presentation is about a brainstorming session on the use of 2011 A and B bond proceeds, which should now be considered a part of the city's general fund. Those are proceeds that we have. They have some restrictions that have to carry out the nexus of the intent of the redevelopment plan and also the management of the bonds. Project must be consistent with redevelopment plan to eliminate blight and create economic development. As I said earlier, the one-time proceeds. So the first item that we have here is the economic development incentive Woody's Classic Grill. This was a $50,000 economic development project, the use of bond proceeds. As Ms. Fortune can help me out here also, is that the council already approved this. And what we had at the time was, we had about $30,000 remaining in bond proceeds. And so we took the $30,000 and the $20,000, and that's kind of a combination of where we are today.
That is correct. When we came to council to actually approve the economic development incentive with Woody's Classic Grill, we used a portion of the 5%. We had $30,000, and we, as approved by you, are going to use the 20% for the remaining part of the incentive.
The next item is the purchase of housing successor agency property. The goal here is, we've had this property since, I believe, late 2016. It consists of, the city purchased this section here was the former Stringfield property, and next to that would be the housing successor agency property. So over the course of the last two years, we've had developers come in. We've had developers propose hotels, apartments, and also mixed use or use up front in terms of on Barton Road. We've had developers only want to develop Barton Road. We've had developers wanting to develop Barton Road and then do something with here in the back, or try to ignore this in the back because these are deep, deep lots. And so one of the things that's important to understand is, our lot by itself, the value up front is very valuable because it abuts Barton Road. But if you develop the front without...
Mr. Duffy? Barton Road is up at the top of that map?
I'm sorry, am I...
And I think you are backwards on the parcels.
There we go.
Thank you.
All right. Yes, I am, Mayor. You're absolutely right. That's the back of that. I'm sorry about that. This was the...
The Lape Street got real busy all of a sudden.
Yes, there we go. There we go. Okay, so... Okay, so, the front of the parcel is very valuable. In the back, we had some issues in terms of getting the developer to try and access both of them. So, we have two property owners. One is the city and the other is the housing successor agency. So what staff proposes to do is to have the city acquire the housing successor agency lots, and then we can consolidate the lots and put together a land use palette that would include development of the front and also identifying the section in the back for future use in terms of hotel and/or office complex. So that's just one of the things that we have, one of the proposals for that particular property. I can stop at any point in time.
Let's take a five-minute break.
Sure, absolutely.
Right, we'll reconvene our meeting. We left off on purchase of housing successor agency property.
Yes, Mayor, after everyone helped me clarify my directions, and I just pointed out that this was the frontage of Barton Road, the goal was to actually come back to the council with a land use palette that would show the ability for us to develop the front of these parcels and also develop the back of these parcels for either a hotel or office complex in the back there. We could, when we do this, if we acquire all the property, we can have a developer either develop the front by itself or have a developer submit the project for a combination. And that was the overall goal of using those proceeds for the housing successor agency. And just to note that any proceeds for the housing successor agency must remain within the housing successor agency for affordable housing or low-margin housing. Okay, the next item is the purchase of automated license plate reader cameras. And Ms. Fortune has this particular item.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, City Council. As Mr. Duffy had said, in June of 2018, City Council approved the purchase of additional automated license plate reader cameras, assuming that our bond proceeds would be approved and transferred to the general fund. As you're aware, the bonds were transferred last month in August. So we proceeded, went ahead, we had ordered the equipment. They have been delivered at this time that they're working with our Public Works Director as to how to wire the cameras into the traffic signals. Okay. So we are expecting that they will be up and running by the end of October or the 1st of November.
This is refurbished basketball courts at Veterans Freedom Park. This is, this surface actually is sort of a composite surface with a more supportive background. And it also has, in keeping with the theme of the Veterans Freedom Park, I was also told that if this theme were to actually occur, you would not use a gold ribbon, you'd use a different colored ribbon. But the insignia is all the branches of the services. And that would be, bond proceeds would be about $45,000, where we'd use other park development, development impact fees for the remaining portion of this project. Also, this is wayfinder signs. We have Sandra Molina to talk about this.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Sandra Molina. This particular project would propose to utilize approximately $30,000 of bond proceeds to erect wayfinder street signs within the city. And these type of signs are the type of signs that direct people to community services such as parks, senior center, the high school, city hall, library, those type of facilities. And so, that's what this project would do.
In addition to that, we did receive a call from the BIA, and the BIA has indicated they would like to work with us to see if they could either manage or help us with these particular wayfinder signs. And so, one of the things that we'll be examining with the BIA is if they do a one-time program or are they looking for an ongoing maintenance cost? And so, if that were the case, we'd have to examine what we could actually use the bond proceeds for in that process. But we are going to be having conversations with the BIA and others if this, if this something that the council is interested in pursuing. These are mobile bleachers, and this sits about 160 people. It is pulled in with a F-250 truck or 150 truck, and it opens up and is AD accessible within 10 minutes of it being placed at various locations. What this project would do, or in these seats, they come in blue. So, what it actually does, it would reduce the amount of time that, in terms of for different special events, having staff come out and put chairs up and so on and so on. So, it's a project that is, we brought forward in the past, and we're just going to bring it forward to see if the council's interested in something like that. Fitness park camera. We have Mr. French.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Councilmembers. Alan French, Public Works Director. I'm here to present this fitness park camera. The fitness park is the only park that we have that does not have a camera at this time for safety reasons. The park was started with no electrical source of power because we wanted it to be green and efficient. So, with the completion of the Barton Road interchange project, they constructed a street adjacent to the park, which included street lighting. And our cameras that we have throughout the city utilize the streetlight poles and power at the streetlight. And we hang them from there and we're able to view all parts of the street as well as the areas around it. And in this instance, we would have a full view of the fitness park once that goes in. And so, this item, should the council choose to move forward with it, would purchase the camera for that location.
This is the Blue Mountain Trail, and Ms. Molina will handle this one?
Yes, thank you. So this particular project, council may recall, the city was actually successfully awarded a grant from the HCF Habitat Conservation Fund that's being administered by the State Parks and Rec Department. And the budget for the Blue Mountain Trail, I should first explain what that is for the, for the audience. So the Blue Mountain Trail and trailhead, this is Observation, and Observation then turns into Van Buren here. The city owns this property. And so, we proposed in our grant to construct a parking area, trailhead, and then we would cut a trail to connect to the Blue Mountain access road that leads up to Blue Mountain. And so, we did receive the grant. We asked for $212,000, even though the budget for the project is about $575,000. And that's because HCF does, did not, has not historically granted more than that. And so, what we would anticipate is other funding sources including development impact fees, park fees, but we also anticipate that we would need to utilize bond proceeds in about $125,000. And I also wanted to just point out some of the improvements that would be constructed with this trailhead. We would have restroom facilities, hydration station for people and pets. We would put interpreted trail, excuse me, interpreted signage along the trail, and this is just also just a picture of a portion of the trail. And so, that's what this particular project would fund. Thank you.
This is Barton Road Business Sign Program. What this program would consist of, it would work with business owners and potential new businesses to increase signage. And this would be basically a loan program that would, businesses would repay the loan based on increased sales tax. And so, if you are a new business and you're coming to town and you are spending, say, $3.4 million and you want to have an increased sign, this program was envisioned to go up to $50,000. And over a period of time, we'd look at the overall sales tax you would generate, and then you would pay that back based on the sales tax. If you're an existing business and you think that you could have an increased customer base if you were more visible, you would work with us and you'd come up with a program to, say, create your new sign, and you would have this loan. If you generate through your sales tax enough to pay back the loan over a period of time, that's fine. If you don't, you would actually pay the loan back over the period of time. So, your increased sales tax, we get that information on a quarterly basis. We'd be able to determine that, yes, the sign has been effective for you and you've generated more money and therefore we've accomplished our overall goal with the use of the economic development with these particular signs.
And if it doesn't increase sales?
If it doesn't increase, then you're, as a property owner, you're going to be paying back the loan. This is Lacadena median, and Mr. French.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. Council, this is, project would be for our segment of the Lacadena median, which goes from Litton to Palm, which is roughly, I'm pretty sure it's about a half a mile of median, and it's a widened median in Lacadena. This project would add to the landscaping in that area. Recently, Colton has applied for an urban greening grant to put in bike lanes and trees along Lacadena. As part of that grant, I was with them on their site visit from the state, and they did, the state did ask about putting trees in that median. I did not object to, if that was part of their project, that they would do that. So what we would do, should that go forward, we would augment those trees with some plants and hardscape as well to get the full median covered. So that would be the project for the landscape in that median.
This is the Grand Terrace Road Barton Road Enhancement Project.
Yes, thank you. So this particular project would fund the design work to enhance this intersection, or this half of the intersection. As you can see, there's the, all, the three other sides of the intersection are enhanced in some way with vegetation. This one has a decorative wall, and on one side, this is the bike rest area. And so, what we would propose to do is to hire a consultant to design this area. This area here, this fence is on that property, but the property line actually is closer to the street. So, we have been in conversations with that property owner, and that property owner is willing to grant the city an easement to plant landscaping and maintain it. Thank you.
And this is Michigan Lighting and Landscaping Assessment Plan.
Yes, thank you. So, the previous meeting, there was a bit of a discussion about Michigan Street, and Michigan Street at one time was included in our capital project needs analysis as a street that the city wanted to improve. At that time, the city did have some design plans made, and we were looking at reducing the width of the street and doing a lane diet. That was part of the bond proceeds project, and as you know, that funding became unavailable. But with the extension of Commerce Way, which should now function as the main road for truck traffic, Michigan no longer becomes as trafficky, so to speak, and we would, this project would look at getting a consultant onboard to help us design the strategic plan for Michigan Street. We would envision reducing the street widths, a street tree canopy with street trees, planting, pedestrian streetscape, perhaps even some patio, excuse me, I should say, street furniture out in that area. But what we want to do here is completely redo Michigan Street, make it walkable, put sidewalks. But for us to be able to do that, we need to have a plan for that, and so that's what this project would do.
This is the 40-acre master plan applying for a grant.
So, this particular request for bond proceeds, as the council recalls, a agricultural two-over-lay district was established on these 40 acres, and unfortunately, this aerial is oriented sideways. But, so, part of that discussion, what we all realized and what we've known, but it came to light some more during this discussion, was that this area really does have some challenges with regard to infrastructure. Terrace Street, which serves this area, is, needs to be improved and widened. There's flooding impacts in that area. So there's a number of challenges, but what we would want to do, now that we have the egg-two-over-lay district in this area, what we really envision is be able to capitalize on the green concept in this area. We would propose to have a consultant submit some grant applications for us. There are some applications, excuse me, grant programs available. Caltrans has some planning workshops utilizing Senate Bill 1 proceeds to look at green sustainability. And then also, this is a SCAG program that was one time called the Compass Blueprint. And this program here, which I'll be attending a workshop next week, actually would help the city do a specific plan. And that's what we would like to do in this area, is create a specific plan to address infrastructure, to address uses, and so, that's this particular project. Thank you.
This is slurry sealed additional ADA parking spaces at Veterans Freedom Park.
Yes, Council, this project would resurface the parking lot at the fitness park, as well as, we have many handicap spaces in the west side of the parking lot, but none on the east side. So the project would also add a few on the east side, and it would allow residents to go down to the east side, and the little T-ball field would be easier access that way. Part of this, we would re-slurry and stripe the parking lot. There is some other surfacing in the playground that needs some repairs that we would do as well, and we're checking on any trip hazards or any undulations in the pavement that would need to be fixed, so that would be handled at this time as well. And that's this project.
Cameras and lighting to combat illegal dumping.
Thank you. So as council's aware, that the city does have areas, the area we're just talking about previously, north of Viviana, that does experience a lot of illegal dumping, and we're also experiencing some legal dumping over near the former Cage Park. But what this, what this project would do would purchase a mobile security camera and lighting system. And you see these type of mobile devices in construction, construction yard, you'll see a lot of those. These particular photographs are actually trailers that you, you can see that they're, you know, you tow them, but there are other ones that are a little bit more substantial, so they're heavier and then probably a little bit more secure. But the nice thing about this is because it's mobile, as we're having issues throughout the city, we can move this camera system to help us address illegal dumping. These cameras are motion activated, so the lights will turn on with motion and they'll start recording with motion, and so, that's the nice thing about them. Thank you.
So in addition to video in the area, when there's motion, it's also going to light the area too, so everyone else will be able to see that something's going on down there. Painting retaining walls on main thoroughfares throughout the city.
Yes, Council, this, this project would go through on all our major streets with exterior walls and make sure that all the painting is the same color to be able to cover any of the previous embellishments that were done on it, and it would unify the color of all the walls in the city. So that's, that would be the reason for this project here.
I'd like to recommend approval of that project, just based on the use of the word embellishments.
Thank you, Councilman. This next project is AC unit for the library. Right now, the library... Right now, the library is a dual compressor unit. And, uh, this project, uh, would actually retrofit the non-operating half of the unit. Freon has changed over the years and, um, the one freon that we're using now is actually outlawed. So this would retrofit the unit that's not working and, uh, repair the unit and bring it back to 100% capacity.
Sidewalk repair project, phase two or three?
This is actually Phase Two B.
Okay.
Phase Two A was grinding, uh, areas that we could. Uh, this phase would actually replace panels where the areas that we couldn't grind because they were too, uh, too damaged or the panels were, uh, too settled. This one would go through and replace panels. So, um, and that's the idea of this one.
EV charging stations.
Thank you. So, um, this particular project, the city council may recall that, uh, the city applied for, um, to use their allocation under the MSRC grant. And so we did receive $50,000 for that. What we anticipate doing is, um, putting in these chargers, these, so these are fast, um, chargers. They'll charge a vehicle in about, within half an hour, um, give them a full charge. And so we are going to be replacing the, um, the, um, the stations that are here at City Hall. So we'll be putting into stations here at City Hall. We also are going to put in some, uh, charging stations at a commercial center. And we've been talking to the property owner of, um, the former State or Brothers, uh, location. We are also, you know, I guess the timing, the timing is, is right, but at the same time, the timing is kind of, um, delayed this project a little bit. There's a lot of opportunities out there for charging stations. And so we've, actually, the Southern California Edison has a program where they will completely put in all the infrastructure for us and so that there's no cost to us for that. And there's an also, um, the California Energy Commission also has another program that we've applied for. So what that means is that we can leverage the funds of our original grant and through these bond proceeds to continue to put stations throughout the city. So that's, that's what this project is all about. Thank you.
I'm sorry, we're fighting a fly over here. I'm sorry about that.
I think that was Councilmember Wilson's fly.
Public riderway tree replacement program.
Yes, council, this, this project, uh, would go through the, out the city and replace trees that were either, uh, removed previous years. Or in our tree replacement program, we went through and any of the trees that were diseased or, um, dead, we removed them. And, um, this program would replace those trees in the wells. There are some wells that were previously, uh, empty and this would replace all the trees in that, uh, in those locations. It would also, um, cover some watering for the few, first few months for establishment period. And, um, that way we could ensure the, the health of the trees.
You know, as we looked at this particular project, one of the things, we, we did receive some comments from some council members. And one of them was the, looking at, if you go down Mount Vernon, we have one side of the street that, uh, that, uh, the east side of the street has trees and nice landscape. The, uh, west side of the street, um, is, other than the trees, it's, it's very barren. So, um, through the course of the conversation, um, it was pretty clear is that we don't really have a dedicated design and, and flow throughout the city. Uh, and, uh, Mayor Pro Tim actually told me about, uh, Riverside Avenue, uh, in Rialto. And so I went over there to check that, check that out and look at that. And so, you know, you can see that they've done some planting and they've got the large streets and they've got, they've got a, um, consistent canopy as they, as they, as you move through the street. And so on Barton Road, we may, we, we may not have that. One of the things that's going to happen is when we're, when we're complete with our $105 million interchange project, you're going to see a significant section with nice sidewalks, lamps. And we need to be able to carry that, that theme through, throughout. So as we look at these particular items, one of the things that, um, w- we want to remind the council that we do have an arborist that you had us hire before. And we probably need to bring that person back to have that discussion with, as part of this overall discussion, whether it's Michigan or Barton Road or Mount Vernon, um, we need to have that sort of, lay that out for you in terms of what we believe that the, the consistent canopy should, should look like. Smart bus shelter.
Okay, uh, council, this, this program, we would be partnering with Omni Trans, um, to get this constructed. It would have amenities that the normal bus shelters don't have, uh, including there's some, uh, solar lighting. And I'm pretty sure there's a changeable message sign that, that gets you, uh, the bus timing on it as well. So you know how far out the bus is. We would look at, uh, I'd, um, putting this in an ideal location in the city. So we would do a little survey on where the most ridership would be and, uh, work with Omni Trans to get that installed with this project.
This is the sign at Veterans Freedom Park. Uh, as the council may, may remember, we put a temporary sign on, on top of this particular, uh, sign on Pico Park. Uh, and that temporary sign is now lasts almost two years, but it is coming apart. One of the overall goals is to, uh, follow the same theme as the Freedom Wall and use this, uh, marble facing to go in front, in front of it. This would be a color design of the, of the military insignias, uh, in this particular area. It would be put directly on top of this. And actually, this $15,000 number i- is not an accurate number. I just received a quote the other day for, uh, $9,800 for all of this to be completed. And also, if you remember in the, in, when you enter into the park from the parking lot, there is a, a separate, um, um, little statue or a marker there. And that would include, and putting the face on that marker also. Canopy for playground area at Fitness Park.
Okay, this project, uh, would cover the play areas at Fitness. It was brought to our attention that the Fitness equipment is, uh, exposed all the time. So, um, in the other parks, we do have some tree cover, uh, which shades it in the hot summers. But here at Fitness, they, they don't have it. So this proj- project would, um, cover the playground equipment. And we would look at options, um, rather than just a full shade over the top. Uh, as the picture shows, um, the sail type, uh, shades may even be cost-effective to utilize, especially in those areas. They're, they're relatively large at the Fitness Park, uh, because of the equi- equipment area. But, um, this would be, uh, one of the options that you see here. So we would explore, uh, different options to shade the equipment and come back with a, uh, project to the council.
Fitness Park plant replacement.
Uh, another a- aspect of Fitness Park is it, it was planted with drought tolerant, uh, plantings and, uh, had, uh, ground cover throughout the park. Over the years, and, and we're not sure what happened, but a lot of the planting is missing at this time. I'm not sure if it was, uh, somebody removed it or, um, it just wasn't making it. But, um, the recommendation was to get it replanted. And there are various markers throughout the park that, uh, distinguish certain plant types that, uh, are missing at this point. So this project would be replacing those plant types. And then we would go through and correct and verify that the irrigation system is online to keep them sustainable. So that's what would cover this, uh, for the project.
And this is speed feedback signs.
Yes, um, so this, this would be, uh, occurring on Barton Road between, uh, Mount Vernon and Preston. It was brought to our attention from council that, uh, this speeds have been, uh, seem excessive through this area. So we, um, contacted our traffic consultant who recommended, um, not, not a regular speed survey at this time because we have one that's still in effect. But the speed feedback signs, they've had luck with them in the past and they seem to be able to maybe reduce the speed, uh, for certain sections of road. So the recommendation is to, uh, put one of these in each direction along Barton and, um, see how that fares with the, uh, speed. But it would be, uh, definitely worth it to get these installed with this project, should the council choose to.
With that, Mayor, are we available for any questions?
Thank you, all of the staff members for your presentation. What question does council have of staff at this time? Councilmember Hesse?
Well, question, um, the Fitness Park camera. I mean, I think we need to get that as soon as possible for safety, not only for, you know, vandalism, but also for the kids that are there. And same with the other cameras. Question about the speed thing, do we also, can we consider like flashing lights around, uh, some of the stop signs over there at Mount Vernon? Cause even the other day, I almost got ran over crossing the street and that guy didn't even slow down. He just went right through. I don't know, daydreaming or whatever. That's a big concern. Another question is, had the staff considered, I know this is one-time money and we gotta be conservative and these are all great ideas, but have we considered, uh, street lights on s- some of our areas with also sidewalks, especially for school access like, uh, Grand Terrace Elementary, some of the streets that, you know, the kids are walking? Or is that something different that we're looking at?
No, certainly we can consider all of those, all of those areas. Uh, just remind the council that, uh, we do have the HIS program that is currently under design right now. So all of the intersections on, um, Mount Vernon will be, will have, uh, safety lights and also i- enhanced striping. And so for the other areas, um, you want to add, but certainly all these are great ideas that we can add to the mix.
Yes, I know, like, I know we talked about before for, um, special needs, player equipment, but, well, I've been talking to the Assemblymember's office and the state has special money for that. So I would like to have staff work with me so we could get that going on that. So, uh, that'll save us some money because with this improvement, with the Fitness Parks and everything, I already think for, uh, Suz's Pettis Park, you know, that'd be a great, uh, thing to have. But, uh, I appreciate all your hard work, but I'd just like to see something with the streetlights and the sidewalks too, especially if we get, even a couple over here and there will help. And then plus, the flashing, the signs, you know, the stop signs. So before somebody gets hurt, I, I know we're gonna, one of these days have traffic signals, but we need to do something right now.
Okay.
And also the sidewalk repair, I'd like to see that as soon as possible. My mother-in-law even found yesterday and she just had shoulder surgery and it's a big concern on that now, especially our pathway on Mount Vernon. So, that's all I have. I just wondering if you guys looked into other stuff?
Absolutely, sir.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim, questions?
I have a question because now I'm understa- I, 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 your flow is, we have questions and then you go to public comment and then we come back and deliver it. So my question is on the, um, number of lighting and landscaping assessment plans that have... Do you know how many have actually passed? Cause my understanding, being a 40-year resident, other than lighting and landscaping assessment plan districts have, have passed when it's a developer who's the only voter, but they have failed routinely in Grand Terrace when it's an established neighborhood like Michigan Avenue.
Director Malina actually has that information for you.
So, um, we checked the records, the city clerk checked the records. And the only time that we found that we attempted to raise the, uh, assessment was in the 16, 17 fiscal year with the three, um, original districts. Only one of the three passed. The other two, um, did not.
Which is, is consistent with what you're saying.
Yeah. Well, I thought there were some in the eighties. I, I recall voting in the eighties.
So, so when the, when the district was first formed in 1989, um, it, it had three areas.
Oh, okay.
Those are the same three areas, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Councilmember Henderson?
My question's for Director French, uh, with respect to the, the speed signals, that's what they're called. Do you believe that it has a, a permanent impact on, on traffic, slowing down the traffic? You know, just from anecdotal evidence, my own personal observations, they, they appear to be effective when, when law enforcement is nearby. But once people drive by 30 times in a month and, and it's just a flashing light, they resort to whatever they're gonna be doing in those instances.
Okay, uh, yes, councilman. But it is, I think with the, uh, the message we put up there, because there are variations of messages you can put up. And, um, the more critical message or, you know, um, slow down or too fast, those, I would agree that they're gonna be instantaneous and, and give us results. I would have to contact the, the traffic consultant to see if long-term effects, um, are warranted or, uh, even if they would, um, be sustainable for the same location. We could look at maybe getting a, a portable one would be another option. And to use it at certain locations in the city where we're having the speeding issues. This proposal was for a permanent one, um, but I could look at instead having portable ones.
So, Councilman Henderson, if I might also chime in here, it's been my experience that, especially on, on a road like Barton Road, it is the, it is the degree of the speed that is the issue. So for example, if Barton Road's, uh, is, speed limit is 40 and someone's doing 55, which is, they're really going really fast on there, that's gonna, you know, that's gonna remind them that they actually are going much faster. It's not gonna stop someone going from 40, 40 to 45. It's not gonna have that big of an impact. But when you're exceeding the speed limit by the amounts that we're seeing on Barton Road, it is going to slow some people down.
That makes sense to me. Uh, I would, um, suggest that if the council was going to favorably consider this, that maybe the portable way would be the way to go. It just seems that that's more effective when you can move it from hotspot to hotspot. And, and people feel like, uh, it's something that the city is being proactive about on a citywide basis. Uh, there, sometimes there's portions of Mount Vernon, uh, sometimes there's portions of Van Buren. And any, um, major thoroughfare going from, from the east to west, people go down the incline. And if you're not careful, if you don't stay on your brakes, you're gonna be going, uh, 20 miles over the speed limit by the time you get to halfway down. So, uh, that would help, especially around the school and, and, and other areas. So those are my comments with respect to that. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I have a question. Um, we'll start with a question, follow-up to the, to the speed limit sign. Will that help with the line of sight issue that we have at Barton Road with respect to the controlled intersection? Cause coming up from, from Colton and heading, you know, so heading east and west, there's a line of sight issue with respect to being able to see that there is a controlled intersection. And by having this flashing reminder of the speed limit, is that going to help with that as well?
Madam Mayor, the, the speed limit, um, feedback sign was planned for, uh, west of Preston. So if you're saying there's a sight distance issue.
Well, headed both ways, headed both ways.
Uh, we, we would have to... We, we would have to place it farther east.
Okay, so, so it wasn't designed for that then? It was only designed to remind people of speed?
Well, I think the answer to the mayor's question though really is, what other avenues do you have? For example, there are, there's a blinking signal light that tells you there's a signal coming up and those are the ones that you, that you really need to have because you're right, when you, when you make that turn, you don't, they're not anticipating that, that signal being there. So, they have those blinking lights, the one that's on Mount Vernon, that's not working, but there's, there's one there that's supposed to...
With flashes around the blink? And you're, you're thinking it was a signal ahead, is that, that's what we need?
Well, I, I believe I asked a question about it before and you had mentioned something about the speed limit reminder. So, I was following up to find out if, if that's truly the intention of that as well or if it's just to remind people of the speed limit.
Okay, yeah, that's speed limit. Speed limit reminder really is all it is. It's not a warning ahead of the signal.
All right. I, I would like to see, if possible, could you, could you come back with a proposal of that? The Mount Vernon Hillside stabilization was at one time a project that we were considering. Is there a reason that that wasn't brought back as part of this list?
Yes, Madam Mayor. We had submitted an interest form for some funding for that project because we were looking into doing the slope repair and stabilization. We were asked to submit that project. It is a 60-40 match project and our estimate right now was at 3.5 million. Our portion would be 700,000 to 800,000 for that. So, funding was a challenge for us. So, we haven't resubmitted at this point, but that was the reason we were holding back was to secure some additional funding.
So, for example, with that particular project, we're working with the city of Colton and Mr. French and I talked with the SBC director and he, he said that we should work with Colton to get it on the CPNA list for arterial roads and that, once it's on that list, because it, it's, portion of it is their road, it's our hill. So, we have a combination and we think that we'll, we can get that on the, on their CPNA list, that we can get the funding to stabilize that, that particular road. So, we're looking, it's not a dead project, we're looking at avenues to try and get the funding for that.
Okay. And then as far as the smart bus shelter, if there's funding for the smart bus shelter, would the existing bus shelter be able to be moved to somewhere, say like the senior center that doesn't have a bus shelter at all?
Yes.
And, and is there an opportunity to consider a regular bus shelter at the senior center?
Yes, we can certainly work with OmniTrans to try and, and have them understand that because there, there are, there are some issues there. I see seniors there all the time that there's, there's no shelter, there's no, there's no bench at that location. So, we can sort of put that on the list and we can move probably very quickly on that.
Yes, we can work with the normal bus shelter or the smart one. We could work with OmniTrans to get that in.
Okay, that's the last of my questions. Did you have any questions, Councilmember Wilson? No, okay. We'll open it up for public comment. Mr. Jeremy Rivera?
I know I'm limited to three minutes. I ask for a little mercy because I would like to talk about the parks and I'm on that committee. It's my honor to serve on that committee. We met for the first time. I went with Mr. Duffy and we looked at Freedom Park and the Fitness Park in some of these areas. And I'd like to make some personal recommendations as the committee has not had a chance to meet back with Mr. Duffy's ideas. First would be the sign for the Veterans Freedom Park. I think that's very important. I'd like to move fast on that, so we have that up for the Veterans Day celebration possible. I did ask Mr. Duffy to check with the guy that my only concern was that it is made out of granite and I've been around enough high schoolers and middle schoolers that they like to take paper clips and etch things into granite. So, that was one of my concerns where most of our parks have a concrete sign with the stamped name of the park in there. I think we've gotta check that out. I don't want to put a beautiful sign and get defaced. The Fitness Park Camera, we need that. Unfortunately, I don't think they can go in until the light poles go in, but that's something that's also under $10,000 because there's no power at the Fitness Park. It's all solar operated. The plants at the Fitness Park, it is a water demonstration. Most of those plants, every single one of them, I think, except for a couple of trees at the black walnut, is a drought-resistant plant. I don't know, 15,000, it's probably a little heavy. There's probably about 30 plants that need to be replaced there. I walked it today. Also, I'd make a recommendation there to put in what we call gorilla grass mulch. It's made out of redwood. It's a little bit bigger and durable mulch to remulch that whole park. So, it looks nice and the redwood retains the color for a lot longer than regular mulch. When we're at Veterans Freedom Park, a lot of the planar areas where the trees are, they are reseeded with grass, but because the boys and girls walk around with their cleats after baseball, it's really bare. There's no grass in those planar areas and I would like to recommend to put the gorilla mulch in there as well and get that looking real spiffy for the Veterans Day weekend. Also, to re-slurry that parking lot, if, I think we have time, if we get on that, to get that parking lot re-slurried and striped. If we can get that done for 30 grand, I think that's a bargain because that's a big parking lot. I think the only thing that was on there was a basketball courts for Veterans Freedom Park. I think that would really spiff up the place and make it pop. And I think that's it, we covered, Mr. Duffy? And if the corner of Van Buren and Reed, the southwest corner, that's Lee Belt's front yard, if someone could grind that sidewalk or replace that part of the sidewalk, the tree's uplifting it and I keep tripping on it, I'm trying to walk and get thin, but I might fall and break a hip at this point. That's just a personal side note. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rivera. All right, we'll close public comment and bring it back to council for their direction to staff.
You know, at, having a second dive in on this, I was a little concerned about the Lockettina medium because I thought we were spending half a million dollars at, at first I, I, I support all these programs. I think they're well thought out and carefully thought out and I think there's some clear direction on some areas that maybe need a little bit of more review from a staff perspective. But, what I had a discussion with, with the city manager about was, I've been attending all these developer summits and conferences and I was just invited to one last week and the consistent theme is they're trying to get employees to move out this way, like Deckers and Moreno Valley and some other groups. And so, they, they feel that, the city managers forum felt that they have overcome the negative image that we have. And the orange curtain is coming down, families are coming, well, millennials are moving here that are doing family formation. But they want to, there's certain things that people that come from other areas are accustomed to. And I think we're woefully hurting on, we used to be a rural community. When I moved here in 1978, Barton was equestrian homes, you know, so pastoral look was, was fine. Now we have a mishmash of things. We have an interchange that we got to select green streetlights for. If I were coming back to Grand Terrace and I was moving where I did off of Michigan Avenue, I probably would reconsider it. 40 years ago, I expected it was a rural community that was gonna be going through some, some uplifting and development and 40 years later, it's never happened. My only concern with imposing a lighting landscaping district on an existing Michigan Avenue that's used by school people, by youth community, that's been neglected and with the keeping of the redevelopment agencies that we're supposed to eliminate blank. I mean, I sat here when they were looking, taking pictures, consultants were taking pictures of a, a lawnmower business that was supposed to look that way. I mean, it was an old wooden building. So, I would just ask staff that, Michigan, we really look at, I understand you want an opportunity to see if we can get some funding, but just for me, I would kind of urge the council that maybe at some point we need to have on the horizon when we bite the bullet and do something here with this money. Certainly, that's one area that's deserving of, of redevelopment agency intent funding. I understand, talking to Edison reps that I, I meet and talking to you, that there is some underground utility fund money and as developments comes in, they're, they're doing some things, but we, we have gaps. It's unsightly. We, we need to, people want to live where there's shaded arterios, they're walkable, they look lovely. And I hate to say this, but I, one thing that Jeff McConnell has said that I think reads true, and I hate to say it to you staff, but, you know, we live here, you don't live here. And I just need to emphasize to you that every day that we drive through our community and we, we just don't have the finishing touches. And, and the reason, I think they're also an economic driver because we want to attract people that want to live here, that raise our property values and also complement what other Vision 20, 30 things that we have on the 100 acres, make ourselves whole. But I support this. I imagine what, there's one about 1.2 million residual after this list?
There's, with this list, there is, there's 1.4 on this list, I think. So, there's $500,000 remaining and then there's that $800,000 that we have tucked aside to try and figure out, you know...
Right. And then with the successor agency property is something that we need to, to look at. And so, with that little residual money, I guess we need to think about tying down how much money we need to set aside for the slope stabilization so that we have money and that we're not, we're not completely broke when we, we figure out what we need. And that's all I have to offer.
Thank you, Mayor Protim. I have a clarification on the Michigan lighting and landscape assessment plan. In the description, it doesn't discuss assessing the property owners on that street. Was that part of this?
What's an assessment plan then?
I, I thought he was assessing what needed to be done.
Yeah. And, and that's, and that was the, that was the intent of that, was, is to assess the development plan and then come up with a, a process to be able to go out and, and seek grants for that. It wasn't to actually assess the, the prop...
Okay, so I'm because of the hearing lighting and landscape assessment district?
That's right, yeah. Sorry about that. Yeah.
Bacon switch there. Okay, thank you very much for that clarification. Councilmember Wilson?
I'd just like to say I'd be opposed to spending any of this additional money that we're talking about, either the 900,000 or the 1.9 that we've set aside in the RDA scheme for anything other than storm drain stuff and road stuff that we so badly need to be able to make sure that this city is, you know, has a good circulation element and has its infrastructure up to par if we can tie these things to the RDA goals. Other than that, you know, I, I think we, we are in fear, or at least I am in fear, of moving too quickly to pee the money away and I really don't want to see that happen. So...
Councilmember Henderson?
I just want to make sure, I understand Councilmember Wilson's comments, sir, if you could help me out. Are you, are you suggesting that, that storm drain projects and, and other significant public infrastructure projects be developed in concept and brought back and essentially supplant most, if not all, of the projects that are listed?
Yeah, as far as I'm concerned, it should be in, in accordance with the RDA guidelines so that we don't run afoul of the Department of Finance definitions. You know, at this point, we're pretty, let's call it fortunate, temporarily fortunate, that we've received a little bit more than we thought we were going to. But, you know, all of this money that we fiddled around through the RDA debacle was all supposed to be set up to wipe out urban blight. Well, part of the wiping out urban blight, I think, is under the definition of, let's get our streets squared away and keep our streets and also get our storm drain stuff all squared away. We don't handle the water, we don't handle the underground utilities. We do those things. So, let's make sure that and maybe incentives to businesses to get them on, to get boxes on lots. That's what I see the RDA stuff really defined as. So, unless it's those things, I don't think we should start, you know, doing lots of littles.
Thank you, sir. From my understanding, from the staff presentation, that all of these projects meet the redevelopment requirements and the, more specifically, the redevelopment bond covenant and bond indenture. So, I need to hear from the city manager and the city attorney as to whether or not that's a safe assumption.
Mr. City Manager?
Yes, and one of the things that we did was we, we took all of these projects and we sent them to the deputy city attorney and he went through and he said, based on what we presented, that they, they meet, they meet the redevelopment plan and the original intent for the bond proceeds. Now, there will be another look at each, before each project comes forward to the council, there would be another look at the project by the, by the attorney to ensure that we don't run afoul of, of, you know, the covenant for the, the use of the bonds, so...
Councilmember Henderson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I agree with Madam Mayor Protim and I agree with Mr. Wilson. It's kind of maybe trying to have our cake and eat it too. I will say this, if the council was to favorably consider all of these projects and it's clear that we don't get points for saving money, redevelopment money, it's important to also note that if we bring about the gateway specific plan successfully down the road, that the oversizing of the storm drains, proposed oversizing of the storm drains as part of that project would go a long ways toward addressing Mr. Wilson's comments. The other thing is, that I want to mention is, with respect to the Mount Vernon Hill, we recently approved a hazard mitigation plan that includes the Mount Vernon Hill in the plan itself and that should, I emphasize should, enable us to compete more effectively and more aggressively for outside funding with respect to that. I'll conclude by saying I, I, I think the projects that are listed are, are worthy, but I'm, I'm also of the opinion that, that east-west storm water capture is a significant challenge for this community and has been since, well, well before incorporation. So, I'm not ending this well, but I, but I think if there's a way to, to take steps on some of the larger infrastructure-related projects and also do things that we, that are listed here, we would be well served by considering those things.
Thank you, Councilmember Henderson. Councilmember Hesse, did you have comments?
No.
Okay.
I think that when we start addressing some of these items on here, they do actually fit within the, the idea of the redevelopment agency, much, much as the, looking at the lighting and landscape planning for Michigan, as well as the economic development incentive that would come from the purchasing of the house or successive agency to, to separate those properties. I think that it's important to, to not only say that the Mount Vernon... I think that it's important to not only say that the Mount Vernon hillside stabilization, we have planned for it, we've, it's not a dead issue, I think it really needs to show up on this list. But I think that if we, if we look at the items on here that are heavier on the actual redevelopment side of things, the infrastructure side of things, I think that, yeah, you can make a case for all of them, and they all are good projects. But I don't want to lose sight of the fact that we do have this funding and we should be looking at the things that have been causing us the problems the longest. And stormwater doesn't show up on here really at all. I know we're addressing some of that with our Gateway specific plan, but we have other stormwater issues, I think, just beyond that one project, and I'd like to see that show up on here somewhere. I'm not really, I can't say I'm against any of them, they are all good ones, and the Lockettina median isn't very big, and our share of it would be pretty small, and it's a nice gateway statement. But I also think that, as much as mobile bleachers are good, that's pretty far down my list. I can see where, at some point, it makes sense, but I don't really know that that fits with the scheme of a redevelopment project.
And so may I, I might just add, and this is the purpose of having the conversation, so we can add those items to the list. But I do want to say to the council regarding the storm drain issue, we need to go back and look at the DDA that we entered in with the Lewis Group. There is a requirement for them to de-water Michigan. That was one of the specific things that we wanted to do. Now, the question becomes, is there a need for us to use some redevelopment bond proceeds to fill the gap between what we're requiring Lewis to do and what we want to finally happen? For example, if you look at the Church on Michigan, that Aegis Realty is going to be developing. And so their requirement is going to be curb and gutter and sidewalk and lights. Next to them is the Habitat for Humanity. Their requirement's going to be the same. In between them is a property that is existing property. So you can't have Aegis Realty do, you know, quarter of a mile and have these other guys do this. The city's going to have to come in and fill the gap. And as you put sidewalks in, you're going to have to put, you know, the curb and gutter. The Lewis project is required, as Councilman Henderson said, to upgrade their stormwater pipe. But they're not doing that for free. They're going to want us to be able to do, to be able to help with that service. So all of those things are extremely important that we can, we can add to the list. And certainly, the Lewis project is a significant project. De-watering Michigan is a significant project. But you don't de-water Michigan without looking at what you end up with in the end. So to Mayor Protem's point is, if we're going to have lots of work on Michigan where there's storm drains and sidewalks, why not have the light scape and the landscape and do all of that at once? And that's, and that's extremely important. And if we do it properly, we have a plan and we're ready to go when the Lewis executes theirs and Aegis does theirs, and we're ready to go. And there's lots, because this is a stormwater issue, there's lots of funding out there for organizations who are shovel-ready, who need some assistance in order to get there. And so these comments are right on point.
But it's not on the list.
But it will be.
Yeah. Councilmember, Mayor Protem, and then Councilmember Henderson.
I just wanted to, because this is a brainstorming, and so I would like to see you come back with your strategic plan that includes stormwater and some reserve funds for our participation on the stabilization of the hill. Because I drive down there and I think, dear Lord, something's going to happen there. We're losing more roadway, too, is it just creeps and creeps?
They're actually cleaning it up tomorrow. They're scrubbing up the dirt tomorrow.
Oh, okay. And if, because, and if we could have, you know, because, you know, I could be easily persuaded to take some of this projects out if need be, but we need to see the full plate.
Sure, absolutely.
Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think we've heard from staff, and I'd just like to mention again to council, that there's approximately $850,000 to $900,000 that we're not sure what to do with. But DOF is insisting, according to Assistant City Manager Fortune, that it's our money to do with as long as it complies with the appropriate redevelopment strictures. So we should seek final approval, written approval from DOF regarding the use of those monies, because if in fact it's our money and we can use it for what's being proposed in tonight's agenda item, it can cover some of the areas discussed by the mayor and the Mayor Protem and Councilmember Wilson. So it might be our best opportunity, from a funding standpoint, to have our cake and eat it, too. I like pretty much everything that's on the list here. If we had to remove some, I'd be comfortable doing that if it's going to be replaced by storm drain or Mount Vernon Hill issues or projects or concepts. But we shouldn't lose sight of the fact that we do have an opportunity to realize another $900,000 or so. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Can I offer a final comment on the $900,000?
Mayor Protem.
Why can't we engage someone like Fieldman, Rollup, or HDL to do a forensic approach to unwinding that money and, because my thinking, it has to be some kind of tax increment cumulative windfall.
Assistant City Manager.
Ms. Fortune? I'm sorry.
Mayor Protem, Fieldman and Rollup is aware, and they are reviewing the legislation. As I had said in a prior report, they're the ones that had said legislation is allowing us to use 20%. 20% equates to 1.9 million. So to begin with, 2.8. And in answer to Councilmember Henderson's request, the Department of Finance, in their determination letter, said yes, you are authorized to use the 2.8 million. That's our attachment. But if the law says we can only use 20%, what we're looking at is, the State Controller's Office doesn't talk to the Department of Finance. The Department of Finance might have said yes, but if the State Controller's comes and audits and says, hey, you were only limited to 1.9, and we have spent it, then now we have to make up for that. So, yes, Fieldman and Rollup is looking into it for us to get clarification.
All right. Because it's kind of hard sitting here when we were doing a Measure C to find out staff knew that we had 700 and some money and we didn't know it. So I don't want, I don't want to be, you know, where we have money, but we think we can't spend it, and we had money, but we still had a tax measure on the ballot that we weren't saying anything about. It's a pretty frustrating position to be in.
All right. So, Mr. City Manager. You've been given direction?
I have.
Is there more that you would like?
So the recommendation is if you would approve the list of projects, staffing, and also with the comments that you guys have made, and maybe you want me to bring it back in the future, and Mayor Protem made some comments about, you know, stormwater and the Mount Vernon Hill. I can take those comments, and everything you've said that's not on this list is going to go in that report backlog that we have, and we'll have one particular item on the report backlog, and then we'll add these back to the list and bring the list back to you. I mean, that's fine. I've got the direction, but...
Okay. So one of the things that you asked for, though, was the authorization to move forward with projects less than $10,000. So you're asking for that as well.
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to augment the direction given by, excuse me, by directing staff to determine forthwith the disposition of the approximately $900,000 and reconcile the different, the potentially different positions between the Department of Finance and the State Controller's Office.
Prior to approval of the list?
Not necessarily prior to the approval of lists, unless that's, you want to add that.
I'm just clarifying.
No, no.
Mayor Protem, you had a...
I would say it would be helpful. Storm drains are pretty expensive, but hills stabilization is pretty expensive. Oh, sorry. I think it would be helpful to have that money to talk about, because hillside stabilization's very expensive, storm drains are very expensive. We need to have, to have that. And I just wanted to add that lost in this direction isn't also a master plan on streetscaping.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My only comment to the, to the, your comment and the Mayor Protem's comment is that Mount Vernon stabilization and/or storm drain, either together or separately by themselves, could easily exhaust the entire 2.8 million if we get approval.
Yes, yes, it could.
And so that's the reason why I didn't want to make a conditional on that, because we have a number of projects that, the bang for the buck is pretty, pretty good in my estimation, and it can have a positive impact on the community. If you want to look at Grand Terrace from a beauty standpoint, you have to enter into our neighborhoods where you see all the beauty. And our major thoroughfares, particularly Barton Road, do not reflect the major thoroughfares of other communities, and it does not reflect what we aspire to be and what's set forth in our 2030 vision. So I like virtually all of these projects, and I think we get a lot for them, and this might be our last, best, and final opportunity from a redevelopment funding standpoint to do something about them. Thank you.
Councilmember Henderson, I agree. I like all these projects, but I also know that there are infrastructure issues that we have just not done and not completed and not completed, and I think it's important to at least have them on the list so that we can examine them with the prices.
Mayor, if I might add, that, once again, that the list can certainly be updated with the items that you have mentioned. And none of the, only $42,000 is under the $10,000 range. That's what you, if you approved this list, that's what I would be spending out of the $1.9 million. The remaining portion has to come back to you for any particular project that's going to be, that's going to be approved. And certainly, we can, we need to add this, add those items to the list.
All right. Councilmember Wilson.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we hold on the approval of the list of the projects, directing staff to further develop project concepts for council consideration, and hold on authorizing the city manager to move forward with projects less than $10,000 until we have a complete list and we can properly analyze what our needs are going to be.
I'll second that. Motion by Councilmember Wilson, second by Mayor Protem Robles. Please vote.
Motion passes with Councilmember Wilson. Mayor Protem Robles, Mayor McInnes voting yes. Councilmembers Henderson and Hossi vote no.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to City Manager Communications.
Mayor, just as a reminder that...
I'm sorry, I hate to, I never hear the vote. Could you go, run it by me again?
Madam City Clerk, will you repeat the vote?
Yeah, it's kind of like, we don't have a visual, so it just fades off.
No, it was Councilmember Wilson, Mayor Pritcham Robles, Mayor McInnes voted yes.
Okay.
Councilmember Henderson, Councilmember Hossi voted no.
Okay, thank you, sorry.
All right.
Sure.
City Manager Report.
Yes, this is a reminder that our new webpage is up and that we're reminding the citizens that there is access to the webpage. Also, just to let the council know, if you have any additional items, like your notes from the meeting in terms of, from your sub-meetings, you want added to your webpage, we can certainly add those items to the webpage from the various committees that you're on. And your committees are listed on your webpage, and there's a link to the committee that you're on, so that people can navigate to that area. We are in the process of the LEDs being added to our streetlights. Some of you have, I'm sure, have seen those by now. I think I drove by a couple of your homes, and I see that the LEDs have been, have been added. And so the city will replace, Edison will actually replace about 400 or so lamps with LED lights, and the city should receive probably somewhere around, in the end, $60,000 annually savings in energy costs when this is all said and done. We had a community cleanup day on Saturday, September 22nd, from 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM. It was well-attended by the citizens. It was also a shredding event, and we had over 100 vehicles show up for a bulky atom collection. And with that, I'm available for any questions.
Oh, I thought this was a magic, that you were going to unveil something. All right, thank you, City Manager Duffy.
That's where our storm drain meeting is.
All right, we have no closed session tonight, so we will adjourn. Next regular city council meeting will be held Tuesday, October 9th, 2018, at 6:00 PM. Any request to have an item placed on the future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to the city clerk's office, where the request will be processed in accordance with council procedures. We are adjourned. Thank you for your discussions tonight.